Good evening. I will call this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem for Monday, May 24th, 2021 to order. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Vice Chair Stapleton?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson? It's en route. Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Lee Young is absent and sitting in as guest counselor is Casey Kopchow.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Chair Hoy?
Here.
Commissioner Nordike?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and if you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I see that we have nobody signed up, or I'm sorry, I should go in order of the agenda, not in random order. Vice Chair Stapleton, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
We do not.
Thank you. And I see we have nobody signed up for our public comment. Vice Chair Stapleton, the consent calendar.
Yes, I move approval of the consent calendar. But I need a second.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Stapleton, seconded by Commissioner Phillips. Go ahead.
All right, the consent calendar consists of item 3.1A, which is the April 26, 2021 draft Salem Housing Authority minutes. And that concludes our consent counter.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, will the recorder please call the roll?
Commissioner Lee Young is absent. Commissioner Gonzalez? Absent?
No, he just responded, I believe.
Oh. Thank you. Commissioner Nordike?
Hi.
Commissioner Lewis?
Hi.
Vice Chair Stapleton?
Hi.
Commissioner Anderson?
Hi.
Commissioner Phillips?
Hi.
Chair Hoy?
Hi. Motion passes. I see that we have no public hearings and no special orders of business, but we do have an information report. And I do see our Housing Administrator Ms. Yutz here, so I would like to turn it over to her and have her tell us about her information report this month.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Yutz. I'm the Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority. And tonight I just kind of wanted to highlight the portfolio occupancy section of ours. As at the bottom of that, we have been updating on our rental assistance demonstration project, which is the rain model of our multifamily buildings that are three, four, and five bedroom. So you can see that we're nearing completion of that project and we're very excited for the completion of that. The buildings have turned out marvelous. They have wonderful and many amenities. They have great playgrounds, great outdoor space, and we hope that our families utilize them well in the upcoming years. It'll give them re-life for a good another 20 to 40 years. So you'll see that we have three units in progress at Meadowbrook. We hope to have those full by the end of this month. We're actually planning to have staff work overtime over this upcoming weekend to ensure that we do have those ready from the upcoming week in fully occupied buildings by the end of May. And then on top of that, we have Brush College, and it's showing that we have six units still in progress. We're nearing the incompletion of those. So our ultimate goal is to have this complete project punched out in June and all of them turned over. So as well as that, we did accept 34 of the emergency housing vouchers at the Housing Authority. And these vouchers are specifically listed for those that are homeless, at risk of homeless, victims of domestic violence, stalking, dating violence, and human trafficking. These vouchers will come as a great opportunity for us to work as collaboration with not only our agency, but West Valley Housing Authority and the COC. So we're looking forward to this, even though we know this is very challenging times to find additional rentals in our area. We decided to accept them and move forward and try to provide this additional assistance into the community.
Thank you for that. If I could just highlight that for just a moment, Ms. Yutz, I apologize for interrupting you. I'm sorry about that. I thought you were done.
No problem.
I just want to congratulate you and thank you for taking that on because I know that not all agencies have chosen to do that because of the difficult nature of utilizing them. And so I am very grateful that you and your staff have taken that on as a challenge. And I know that you're going to be successful with it. And I really appreciate it because it's actually going to benefit real people in real houses getting off the streets or staying, you know, or not losing their home. And I think that's, that's great. And like I said, I know several agencies were not able to do that because they just don't have the capacity. And it speaks to you and your staff that we were able to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I am appreciative of our staff that have been open to this and working very diligently. This is a very short timeline turnaround for us to get these vouchers on the streets. If anything more, it's going to provide more collaboration between our COC and our partners out there to make this happen. And I think it's a great opportunity for everybody to work and see how it can coordinated entry and everything can work as a team. This will be vouchers that are specifically off a coordinated entry waiting list and not our five-year-plus closed waiting list. So it's time to see how we can make this all work and, and hope to look forward to it in the future. So as well as that, just an update on our office remodel, we're still on track. We're about a week behind due to our commodities being very difficult to come by, case work being especially difficult right now. But I'm glad that everything has been kept on track and hopefully we continue to push forward for a July completion of that and get the doors open when COVID is, our COVID safe levels allow for it.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, President Hoy. I have to say, now that I'm down here, everybody looks so much better on the big screen. Maybe I'll come down here all the time. Ms. Yutz, I really appreciate the work you and your staff are doing. And I echo what President Hoy said. I do have a question that I ask almost every time, and I'm sorry, I seem like I forget the answer every time. But I'm looking at the voucher lease up mainstream net is only at 36%. Everything else is above 90% or even 100%. If you could just let us know what the story is with mainstream net.
Certainly. So our mainstream are the ones that we received this last year. And they came with a string tied to them that we had to go through our entire waiting list for the Section 8 program to send out to any potential qualified applicant off that waiting list to verify whether they qualified for the program or not. So we have actually mailed out to every single applicant on our waiting list and had to receive those back. We are at the point where we have done, gone through all of that and have updated, and the vouchers are starting to go out. So we have about 50 out there. The problem that we do have is our ability to locate units that meet the qualifications of our payment standards. This is an area that we have also requested to use some of our additional COVID funding to be able to bring in the Housing Navigator that specifically will do the job of calling every landlord or every listing out there and helping to try to connect individuals with landlords and meeting those needs or that gap in needs. So we are looking for a limited duration position to fill and in order to make that happen.
Thank you. Are there other questions from Ms. Yutz? Ms. Yutz, did you have any other comments to make for us tonight?
That's it tonight. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for your outstanding work. I really appreciate it and thank you for this report. And seeing no other business before the Housing Authority, we are adjourned.
Well, good evening. I'm going to call this meeting of the Salem City Council for Monday, May 24th to order if the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Stapleton?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Likewise.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Lee Young is absent. Guest Counselor Kopchow?
I'm here.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Bennett?
Here. Very good. Counselor Hoy, any additions or deletions?
No.
Okay, very good. Guest Counselor Kopchow, good to see you here this evening. Thank you for joining us. This is an opportunity for members of the council to make any comments. I've got one I'd like to share with you. I got word today that former mayor Robert Lindsay passed away in his 90s. I knew Bob Lindsay very well. I was a reporter here at City Hall when he was mayor. It was interesting you coming off of the Housing Authority meeting. Robert Lindsay Tower is Robert Lindsay, that Robert Lindsay. He took a lot of heat and then teach us all a lesson over that building. At that time, it just didn't make sense to have a place for low-income seniors to live. He took some, it was Lindsay's folly. He was a remarkable person. He's, he's one of the two or three mayors who was responsible for the current configuration of downtown as we know it. The revitalized downtown of 50 years ago. So a true loss to the community. He was a genuinely fine, fine man, someone I enjoyed very much. I got to know him extremely well as, as a friend over the years, so very sorry to have lost him. Anyone else? Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say that I just took a trip to Bend, Oregon this last weekend. And it's the first time that I've been to another city for an extended period of time as a city councillor of a different city. And it was just fascinating. I walked around the city just taking it all in in just such a different way than I would have normally experienced a city. And I just really loved so much about the city. I was staying in a little bungalow and about a block or so down the street, they had a neighborhood hub. And it was, I just have to say, it was fantastic getting up in the morning, you know, going down there and having French toast in a restaurant. One, for starters, that's just great, having French toast, nobody, I didn't have to make. But it was so great to just be in that neighborhood feel and have a restaurant right there. They kind of had four different businesses on the bottom, a bakery and a restaurant, a couple of things. And then they had housing on the top and it just, it fit in so well. And it was just so nice to experience that. And then the other thing I noticed a lot of was so much bike infrastructure there. I got to witness and kind of experience how we have biking on the inside of parking and then traffic. I had never really experienced that before, at least noticed it. And so it was just really great to see all the paint on the ground. I knew where I was supposed to be. The bikes knew where they were supposed to be, pedestrian crosswalks all over the place. So it was just really my little happy place over the weekend. So that was great. And then I also wanted to bring up something that I've been thinking about, and that is DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and how we as a council are viewing that. I guess I've been thinking about this a lot and how I might interpret this might be different than maybe some of you and how we're kind of wanting to move forward with that. I hope I'm making sense. I feel like I'm not. But it just has really been on my mind and I'm really looking forward to maybe having some more in-depth conversations, whether it's a work session or somewhere we can have extended conversations where I can hear from other council members, you know, what they're thinking and what they think about when we hear those words. Because I think we, I need to know that we're all on the same page and kind of going for the same thing. So I just wanted to have put that out there as maybe a possibility of something we can do in the future. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nordike?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So sneak preview tonight, we have a certain proclamation for a certain celebration for later going on that I'm excited that Counselor Stapleton I will be bringing. So that's just a little taste of things to come for later tonight. I also want to follow up on my past council remarks on Mental Health Awareness Month. As you all know, I'm a mental health advocate and I've been posting extensively about mental health awareness and resources in our area on my social media. That would be Salem City Councillor Vanessa Nordike on Facebook and on Instagram. Most recently, my dog and I, Sierra, participated in NAMI walks. This is an annual tradition. It's a walk in support of the National Alliance for Mental Illness. And we were walking solo this year because of the pandemic to raise awareness for the mental health resources and services available through NAMI, which is the nation's largest grassroots organization dedicated to mental health illness issues. I know mental health has in many cases been impacted and exacerbated by the pandemic, and I've spoken on that previously. So this will be the last remarks that I make in support of Mental Health Awareness Month. But please know that you are not alone and that this has been a challenge for everybody. And please make yourself, please reach out to the resources available in our community and do not be afraid and don't wait. Next, I want to talk about Project Turnkey. We've seen in the news, two of our great community partners have been fortunate enough to receive Project Turnkey funding. Project Turnkey is a statewide organization. It uses state dollars to provide funding to purchase motels and hotels for the purposes of housing the unsheltered, people who've been impacted by domestic violence, the wildfires, and so on. And right here in Salem, I'm thrilled to report that both Midland Valley Community Action Agency and the Center for Hope and Safety each got that funding, which is great because this is very competitive. And I'm thrilled to see that both of these community partners will be getting money. For the Center for Hope and Safety, I have posted a link on my Facebook page to learn more about that project. It's going to be called the Mosaic. They have bought a motel in an undisclosed location because of course they're housing survivors of sex trafficking, domestic violence. So they're not going to be publicizing where they bought it, but they are publicizing the fact that they are buying it. And if you want to see a list of ways for you to donate either in kind or cash, things to help roll out the welcome mat, you know, things like having toiletry items and sheets and things like that to help people feel at home. This is going to be a real game changer for dozens and dozens of people. And as we know from a recent work session that we had here at City Council, domestic violence is the number one cause of homelessness for women in our community. We have several projects in the works to reduce homelessness in our area, either through the city, through the community partners, or a little bit of both. This is truly an all hands on deck moment, and I know that we'll be hearing more about these projects in the future. And we just heard from our Salem Housing Authority staff that we literally have staff working overtime to make more housing available. So I want the entire community to know that we are working on it as hard as we can. And I can tell you from having toured vacant buildings with real estate agents, we are leaving no stone unturned in terms of looking for potential landlords, potential properties for us to help narrow the gap when it comes to addressing homelessness. So I look forward to hearing more tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. So just briefly, a reminder, my name's Trevor Phillips. I'm councillor for Ward 3 and an emergency doctor practicing at Salem Hospital. And we've seen some real progress, you know, in the state of Oregon and across our country in terms of the pandemic numbers. As more and more people get vaccinated, we're seeing a decrease in case rates, hospitalizations, and death, broadly speaking, throughout the country, as well as in the state of Oregon. So I just can't implore people enough, like people, I remember how generous our community was at the beginning of this pandemic when people asked, how could they help the front, you know, line healthcare providers and essential workers? And what I'm telling you right now is now more than ever, it matters. Just get a shot if you can. You know, vaccine, the COVID-19 vaccines that are available are safe and effective. I was doing continuing medical education today, was reviewing data that was collected on healthcare workers that have verified the safety and efficacy of these vaccines. You know, one shot has been found to be at least 80% effective at preventing disease and to some extent transmission. And two shots, the full series of the Pfizer vaccine and Moderna vaccine are 94% effective. And we're some of the highest risk people because we interact with community members who have it. And so it is very effective. So really do your part, you know, get a shot. They're more and more convenient. They're available at pharmacies in your community and probably at your primary care doctor. So, so ask. They're available. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Really appreciate it. Counselor Gonzalez?
Suda rabah, Mayor. Is me hu-huya, Jose Gonzalez. Means thank you, Mayor. My name is Jose Gonzalez. And most of you know, I introduce myself in multiple languages to highlight all the languages spoken in Salem. And today I spoke both Hebrew and Arabic to show gratitude for the Gaza ceasefire. Now, I also want to highlight an upcoming event this Sunday at the Seed of Faith Ministries. There is a vaccine clinic from 8:30 to 3:30. This is the one of two. It's a great partnership between Salem area black churches and the Oregon Health Authority. And this is at 12:30 Winter Street, which is just off market behind Grant Elementary School. And it's really one of many efforts that are being taken to help bring vaccination clinics to where the people are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wasn't going to speak tonight, but I do want to follow up on Counselor Phillips and Counselor Gonzalez. If it wasn't incentive enough, all the wonderful things they just said. Now the Portland Trail Blazers have announced that you'll be able to go to a game and special vaccine seating if you can show proof, proof that you're vaccinated. So there's one more incentive to go out and get that shot. And I'm actually considering going to a game because I'm, I'm fully vaccinated and have been for over a month, and I would love to go see a Blazer game. Thank you.
That, that and not giving and getting COVID, what do you have to lose, you know?
That's right. They won the first game against Denver, hoping they're going to win the second one tonight. Who knows when they come home?
Are you watching that game yet? No, I'm just messing with you here.
It's only 6:22. The game's not on.
Oh, I wasn't paying attention. Where are we? Anyone else? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much. I want to follow up on two items. The first one is what Counselor Hoy said. I'm not watching it either, but it's on tape. And don't anybody tell me what the score is because I'm going to watch it from the beginning all the way through on tape when I'm there. The other thing I want to follow up is what Counselor Stapleton talked about, about going over to Bend. And especially with the bike streets. And I have to say, Counselor Stapleton, you are wrong in one aspect. We have one whole block that I'm aware of that is, is sidewalks, bike lane, parking. And that is on High Street between Ferry Street and Trade Street. You're driving, you're riding your bike down High Street and it's sidewalk cars, bikes. And but when you cross Ferry Street toward Trade Street or Trade Street toward Ferry, I get them mixed up. All of a sudden, you go to the right of the cars. So you are sidewalk, bikes, cars. And I will tell you, as a bicycle rider, including someone who's ridden my bike to Bend from the valley several times, you feel so much more safe because you are more safe. And so I raise this every time we talk about the Mugil Crest Street, the funding we're getting for there. We need to have protected bypass, not just painted bypass. So thanks for bringing that up.
Sorry, I misspoke and even in my ward, I can't. Such a slacker here.
Yeah, Guest Counselor Kopchow?
I'd be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I want to thank Counselor Lee Young for giving me the opportunity to sit in on this. For those who don't know, I serve on the City of Salem Planning Commission and at least three or four other boards and commissions, either for the city or nonprofits. And I also work for the Secretary of State as an auditor. And so I want to mention two-ish things real quick. Over the last couple of weeks, since I was notified that I'd be able to sit in tonight, I wanted to make sure I was as prepared as possible. So even as a planning commissioner, there's still a lot of legwork to do. So I attended all the Neighborhood Association meetings, talked to business owners, spoke to a lot of residents about what their biggest concerns were. And by and large, some of those have already been talked about by other councillors, one of them being houselessness and that crisis and housing affordability. So I'm glad to see agenda items relating to that. I was glad to hear the update in, in that meeting earlier. The second thing I want to talk about hasn't really been talked about as much, although I believe Counselor Stapleton kind of alluded to it with a little bit with DEI. And that's the topic, the difficult topic of race relations and continued hate speech. Tomorrow is the one-year anniversary since George Floyd's murder. And I know that didn't happen here, but it sure as heck impacted us, right? And there's not a week that goes by without someone in our downtown, either resident or business, being targeted by hate. And so there's also, you know, the ongoing conflict in Israel and Palestine, which Counselor Gonzalez just alluded to the ceasefire. Thank goodness for that. But that's rekindled all sorts of antisemitic hate, including a swastika I saw painted on a Realtor sign along with some racist remarks. And so I know the city has put out statements condemning these heinous actions, and I applaud everybody for doing that. But these activities still persist even in the absence of those, or you know, or even with those statements rather. So I feel like there's an obligation to, to, as leaders, to continue to call it out and condemn it when we see it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Powers, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, and thank you, Guest Counselor, for your comment. I want to share as the country approaches the one-year mark of George Floyd's murder, I promise to you, pledge to you and to the Salem residents that our work on racial justice and law enforcement will continue. The City Council-directed independent assessment has given us a good start. And Chief Olmac, who has now been with us six months, has already implemented actions in the area of procedural justice and connecting with our communities in Salem. And that work will, will continue and we will have a full report, full update for you very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move along then. We have a proclamation this evening. We'll have a couple of people here to receive it. Paul McKean, Secretary on the Executive Board of Capitol Pride, and Rowan Eklund, representing the Rainbow Youth Board of Directors and presenting this year's Gay Pride Month proclamation are councilors Nordike and Stapleton. Thank you very much for, for letting me know you'd like to do this. It's something we do each year. So thank you very much. And I know you've got it figured out how you'd like to do it. So go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Yeah. I was going to start off and I'm wondering if we can get Capitol Pride and Rainbow Youth. Are they, if they're here, I'd love your cameras on. Awesome.
There's Rowan.
Awesome. Welcome to the meeting. I wanted to start off with just a couple of comments before we dive in. And so just really thankful to be a part of this proclamation and also know that everybody here, so many of us are connected to this community in so many unique ways that, you know, Counselor Nordike and I may be reading this, but I know that I'm, I'm reading it on behalf of the whole council and really, in my opinion, the whole city. So, so thank you for being here. Specifically wanted to highlight something that maybe not a lot of people know. But currently, right now, we have 100 bills in 33 different states that are focused on targeting the, reducing the rate, or excuse me, reducing the rights of transgender folks and especially trans kids. And this is just an area that I just, my heart goes out and an area that I have learned and grown a lot recently. And so my mama bear hearts, I was telling the mayor, I don't know if I'll get through this without crying, but I'll do my best. So just know that, you know, when, when things happen to women across the world, you know, I hurt. And so when things happen to trans kids across the United States or across the globe, I know that trans kids and LGBTQIA+ community is also hurting. And so I wanted to acknowledge that before we get going to let you know that I see your pain and I see you and value you and everybody who is listening to this. I just want you to know that your government here also sees you. And I know that we're just a city council, but I think that's important. I think words are important. So know that we see you and we value you. So thanks for coming down today and I'll, I'll read this. And then Counselor Nordike is going to take over the last half and bring us home. So whereas cities, states, and agencies across the United States recognize and celebrate June as Gay Pride Month, and it has become a symbol, symbolistic month in which the LGBTQIA+ communities and their supporters come together in various celebrations of pride. And whereas city values include that Salem is open and inclusive to all, including LGBTQIA+ communities, and is committed to supporting their dignity and equity. And whereas many of the residents, students, city employees, and business owners within the City of Salem who contribute to the enrichment of our city are a part of the LGBTQIA+ communities, and their contributions to our capital city can be And their contributions to our capital city can be seen in their widespread academic, political, economic, artistic and social participation in the community and.
And thank, thank you so much. And, uh, Counselor Stapleton, uh, thank you for being a part of this. I'll finish reading it in a second, but I just want to add. I brought this proclamation to the city and I really want a Counselor Stapleton to be a part of it. And, uh, I am working on organizing a gay pride event for June. So message me on Facebook if you're interested in being a part of the planning or showing up for what we hope to be a wonderful event where we see you and we celebrate you. So without further ado, let's continue. Whereas the city of Salem remains committed to protecting the civil rights of all people in an effort to forge a more open and just society and uses our Human Rights Commission as a vehicle to that means. And whereas the city of Salem recognizes support and advocacy groups within our community such as Capitol Pride, Human Rights Commission, LGBTQIA Intersectional Rights Task Force, P-Flag Salem, Rainbow Youth, Gay Men's Social Club of Salem, Salem Lavender Women and Salem Transgender Support Network as contributing organizations that embody the essence of the nineteen sixty-nine spirit that was felt at the Stonewall more than fifty years ago. And now therefore, we, City Council of Salem, do hereby proclaim June twenty twenty-one as Pride Month.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. We'll move on then to public comment. Oh, you know, that's a mistake. I really want to go back. Paul and Rowan, I wanted to, uh, give you guys a chance to comment if you want to say anything you'd like to say. I, uh, we'll have a copy of the proclamation, uh, here at the mayor's office, uh, yeah, or we can ship it off to you, whichever you prefer. But I wanted to give each of you an opportunity to say something. Uh, Rowan, do you want to go ahead first?
Thank you. As a representative of the Rainbow Youth Board, first, I would like to recognize the Kalapuaia people whose land we're on. Um, second, I would like to thank our city and our city council for the dedication to supporting our LGBTQIA plus communities. As those of us in the LGBTQIA plus community know, uh, pride is our identity and it's not something that can be restricted to a singular month. Um, instead, it is a part of our very being that we strive for every day. The support and connections we make through groups and organizations like Rainbow Youth and City Capitol Pride are essential to uplifting and perpetuating the diversity and survival of our community. With this in mind, I look forward to seeing the continuation of the support given by this proclamation in future actions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Paul?
Uh, thank you so much, Counselor Nordike, Counselor Stapleton, Mayor Bennett, all of you. Um, thank you so very much on behalf of the members of the and the Executive Board of Directors of Capitol Pride. Uh, I, we so appreciate the opportunity to accept this proclamation. And I thank you for your continued support of the LGBTQ plus community in Salem. Each year, our organization, Capitol Pride, is honored to host Salem's Pride in the Park, a family-friendly chance for Salem to come together to celebrate our LGBTQ plus community. While that event has shifted recently due to COVID nineteen, we are looking forward to organizing a run, walk this summer and a virtual event this fall in honor of National Coming Out Day. And we are also, of course, looking forward to resuming our traditional event, uh, in the form that many of us are are more used to, uh, next year. Uh, and we invite any of you, uh, we'd love to see any of you at our monthly meetings if you want to to help, uh, and support our planning process. Uh, we are proud to call this city our home and to partner with so many great organizations around the city to help create a more equitable, welcoming and inclusive Salem. Though we have made so many strides, we all have more work to do, from mental health to HIV, from homelessness to taking care of our trans students and more. I thank the council for this proclamation and we look forward to a continued partnership with the city of Salem. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much, Paul. Very good. Okay, we're going to, uh, and again, uh, the proclamation, if you want a copy, is certainly available. Just just let us know. Okay, we're going to move on then to public comment. I'm going to call up, uh, Jacob Garcia.
Hello?
Hi. Uh, Jacob, you have three minutes. Uh, so if you could tell us your name and the ward you live in or address, and we'll move on from there. You can move on from there.
Yeah, uh, my name is Jacob Garcia and I am located in South Salem, uh, six eight one two Flicker Drive. I don't know the ward number exactly. And, um, okay, well, I guess we're starting. So today I'm I'm speaking, uh, totally a change of gears, um, speaking on the extension of the um, the camping in the parks. Um, and so I'm a substitute teacher, a frequent volunteer at Church of the Park. Uh, last week I wrote a letter to the council describing, um, just how evicting people from the parks would be a mistake. And today I will be speaking on just two points in support of extending the legal camping, uh, at Salem Parks. With the preparations before me to speak in detail about whatever questions the council may wish to ask, may wish to ask upon me at the end of my time. Uh, based upon the work session from last week and upon the materials attached to today's meeting, I have to do so that the city of Salem knows that the homeless community cannot in actuality be evicted on June first, simply because there's nowhere for them to go. However, June first still remains, uh, as the official end of park camping, the rationale being that while this date will not signify the immediate end of park camping, it will at least signify the beginning of the end, a series of gradual evictions over time at an unknown but inexorable pace. Um, however, council, I strongly urge you to reconsider, um, this strategy, which which makes June first a sort of soft end date to the park camping system might seem like a humane solution, but it is not. Um, for the unsheltered at these parks, to be informed that they are liable for eviction, but to not know when such eviction is actually coming uh, will be both frightening and confusing. Uh, this decision would be somewhat like having a person stay in a foreclosed home, but them not actually understanding, um, that a decision is whether a decision is legal or not. The homeless community has nowhere else to go other than the parks. And so it's declare on June first that everyone on city park property is trespassing is essentially to force over five hundred plus people into a state of criminality, uh, with no choice of escaping. I can say firsthand that this is a strategy that is already creating stress, anxiety and chaos. Uh, and that will serve only to foster between, uh, that group and the city a combative rather than a collaborative relationship. Uh, I would also like to add that, uh, listing June first as an end date to park camping will also harm, also harm the variety of NGOs who are seeking to help their unsheltered neighbors. Uh, for example, Walmart's Cash for Trash program is now set to end on June first as a way of staying in accordance with city ordinances. Um, the ending of the Cash for Trash program is assuredly an unexpected side effect I know the council would like to avoid. With these arguments in mind, I I posit that the best way for the city of Salem to end park camping is not through legal stipulation, making park camping illegal, but through the provision of a better alternative. Um, if the city does not intend to evict on June first, then it should say so, uh, and protect the homeless and their NGO supporters from unneeded confusion and distress. The truth is.
I'm sorry, the time's up.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you.
Questions for Jacob at this point? I I really appreciate you pointing out the, uh, a situation with Cash for Trash. Uh, I hope we can uh, follow up on that in some way if if the council decides to move forward. I think you're making a a really good point and we'll see if we can talk with Walmart.
Yeah, um, I, yeah.
Go, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I just know, um, I I just know that I was just going to say that I know people will leave, uh, the parks when there are better options presented. And so, you know, we've kind of seen it with the pallet shelters and the roof opening with the pavilion. And so, um, you know, I hope with Cash for Trash, and it just really helps, um, groups like, well, yeah, groups like Church of the Park make these connections with with Walmart. Um, because they have, you know, a plan in place and understanding with the council, so.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jacob, for coming down and speaking to us. Um, I don't disagree with anything you said. In fact, I agree with what you said and and it's, I just want you to be aware, it is our intent to have a soft landing. But it's also, I think, important for us to set sort of a demarcation point, to hold ourselves accountable to following through with a commitment that we made when we we initiated the program of, uh, camping in the park, that we, it was going to be temporary. Government has a way, and organizations in general have a way of just sort of, uh, going on in perpetuity when there isn't a demarcation point. And and while we have set that date, and I believe we will hold ourselves to that date, it isn't, nobody's going to be arrested for camping in the park and, uh, or anything like that as we go forward. And I I'm hoping that the messaging is getting out there. And if not, I'm sure staff is going to work harder on that. But it's our goal to help give a soft transition to land in a better place and to do that slowly and to transition people out of the parks as people come online. You're going to hear more later in this meeting possibly about some more options and then in future meetings about even more options. And so I appreciate the sentiment of your comments. And I I want you to know that I I believe a majority of this council, if not every person on this council agrees with that. And so, thank you.
Yeah, I I want to second Counselor Hoy's comments to you, Jacob, and I hope you'll stay in touch with us, if not coming to council meetings with emails. Uh, as you watch this, I think your your observations will be valuable to us, uh, as this evolves. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Brent Nielsen.
Okay, are we connected here?
We're here.
Awesome. Okay, my name is Brent Nielsen. I'm here this evening on behalf of United Way of the Mid Willamette Valley at four five five Beliler Avenue Northeast. I believe that's Council Ward Five, um, to speak towards Agenda Item twenty-one two ten. Um, so, Mr. Mayor, Counselors, Staff, others in attendance. Um, it's my privilege to chair the United Way's Affordable Housing Committee. I'm here tonight to recognize a significant milestone in our Market Street project, as well as to answer any questions you may have. Um, but before anything else, I'm here to say thank you to, um, folks, city staff and others who have been incredibly helpful in getting us to this point. Um, staff I'd like to recognize specifically include Clint Dameron, Olivia Diaz, Eunice Kim, Gretchen Bennett, Kristen Rutherford, have all contributed to getting us to this point. And and, you know, I guess I just have to say thank you very much. Um, within the community, I'd like to thank Suzanne and Sue from East Lancaster Neighborhood Association. Um, you know, there's so many people, I probably can't thank everyone, and I'm probably forgetting someone, but thank you very much. Um, this is a complex project. Every single one of us is confronted every day by homelessness in some way. There's no easy solution to this issue. In fact, there are so many different challenges tied together that it really calls for many different solutions, each directed at different aspects of the problem. Seniors are the fastest growing homeless demographic. The average monthly income from Social Security in the state of Oregon is fifteen hundred dollars. Using HUD's definition to avoid becoming housing burdened, the rent for these seniors must be less than four hundred fifty dollars a month. Our project will use clusters of tiny cottages, less than four hundred square feet each, to provide housing for less than four hundred fifty dollars. Our hope is twofold. First, to provide an affordable solution to protect seniors from homelessness. Second is to demonstrate this model as a viable model with the hope that civic-minded developers can truly take it to scale. My intent is to remain here, answer whatever questions you might have as you move on and and, um, discuss your agenda item. Um, but, you know, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brent. Uh, can you, uh, uh, point specifically to where the location is so folks understand where it is you're talking about?
Yeah, so it's out on Market Street. Um, I believe in the agenda, it actually has the specific address, but it's out by Swigel Elementary School.
Okay. Oh, okay. Great. Excellent. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for this project. I know it's been one in the works, in the works for some time.
For a while. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I I recall going to the first look at these tiny houses you all had and and you know, the shower all of at the same time. And I thank you very much for the work you're doing in this area. Uh, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Nielsen for being here. And, uh, I pulled this off of our consent calendar tonight so we could actually have a a more robust discussion about it. But while you're here and are available to me for a question, I thought I would just pose it. I I received a question from a reporter just as we were sitting down for our meeting tonight. And I was hoping you could address it. Um, uh, first, I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you to, uh, United Way and Rhonda Wolf and, uh, previous directors. As you know, we, this has been, I think, a little over two years I've been meeting with United Way on this project, and it's, uh, really exciting to see it coming to fruition tonight. I'm very excited to have this project out of my ward and just, I could probably, if I had a decent arm, could probably throw a rock from my house to there. So I'm really excited to have it in our neighborhood. It's, this is for other people, uh, who are on this call. It's, um, this is property that was parcels that were created when Market and Swigel were realigned a few years ago, and they've just been surplus property the city has held. And, uh, you know, I was, uh, looking for possible places for these homes, uh, quite some time ago. And and these properties immediately came to mind, and I'm so excited. Can you highlight, Mr. Nielsen, what, uh, like the number of individuals you think will be served? When this property is, when you're, when the several parcels are fully built out and developed, how many people do you think will be served?
So it depends on how dense we end up going, and a lot of that is still in the mix with, um, work that Eunice is doing on on my Salem and and what density will be allowed. Um, but currently I would say we will probably have in the area of forty to fifty units. Um, you know, tho- those will be, um, four hundred square feet. Likely it's going to be individuals or maybe couples living in them. Um, so, you know, I I would guess it will be conservatively, you know, forty up to maybe eighty or a hundred people.
Um, thank you.
Yep.
Great. Counselor Nordike.
Hi, thank you, Brent. It's great to see you. Um, I remember when I was brand new on council, one of the first things I did was sit down with Rhonda Wolf and her team at United Way to talk about tiny homes for seniors, along with Counselor Hoy. And I remember we toured a prototype on premises. So I'm so excited to see this coming to fruition and up for a vote at long last. I'm wondering, does United Way have photos or any sort of information about these prototypes on its website yet? Because I I'm with you. I would love to see this scale up and for other developers to see this take flight. And I'm just wondering if you have any information currently available on your website for the public.
I do not know for sure if it's on the website. I can make sure that happens. Um, we do have, um, you know, kind of drawings of what we're expecting. Um, but I can't answer for sure if it's on the website.
Great. Thank you, Brendan. And I I, uh, Counselor Anderson, I see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm pretty sure that every single counselor has toured the homes at United Way. And they're just terrific and wonderful. And United Way and everybody else who contributed to this are to deserve our big thanks. And, uh, I think this is part of the general overall situation that we as a city are doing. We are trying in many, many different venues to house the homeless, and this is one of them, and it's going to be very successful. And I would hope, and I'm sure, Mr. Nielsen, that we will be able to work with more projects with you, uh, in United Way as more land becomes available. And we really appreciate the work you're all doing.
Absolutely. We hope to see the same. So thank you very much.
Great. And and Brent, are you going to be here through the discussion of this item, did you say?
Yes, just in case there's any questions I can help with.
Right. Thank you very much. Okay, Derek Wall.
And Mayor, we're not sure if Mr. Wall is here, if he is with Cory Poole's group. So it doesn't look like he has joined independently. Um, so I guess we'll just wait a moment, and if he doesn't answer, we'll go on to the next, uh, person.
Derek, is your, is this guy at your?
No, Derek Wall is not with us.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, you're up next. Go ahead, Cory.
Thank you. All right. Try to be quick here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and esteemed counselors. My name is Cory Poole. I'm the Chair of the Semke Neighborhood Association where Cascade Gateway Park is located. All of the photos you are seeing in the slideshow were taken today. Cascade Gateway Park lies in ruin. The actions of this council have made our neighborhood park completely unusable to those who have helped build it and for years have enjoyed its scenic beauty. Where there were once Where there were once deer and eagles, there is now human despair and smoldering piles of burned garbage. We have had enough. Where our playground once had the voices of children and families enjoying picnics under the oak trees, we now have threatening signs saying to keep out. I've heard many times from this council how important it is that Salem residents can use their parks without fear. Meanwhile, the actions of our councils have turned our park into a lawless no man's land where no person would go if they valued their personal safety. It is unsafe for neighbors and it is unsafe for the homeless people forced to live there. The neighbors and businesses around Cascade Gateway Park have been terrorized for over a year. The homeless campers that trespass and rob those around the park operate with complete impunity. We in the neighborhood around the park are under constant siege. Where are the tree advocates? Where are the wildlife advocates? Where are the parks advocates? Where are the senior citizen advocates? Who on this council will represent the neighbors of Semke? I understand that solving these problems are difficult. I wonder why more efforts weren't made to find real solutions in the past year. It is clear from the very start that this policy wouldn't work. Within a few weeks, code enforcement officers were attacked, resulting in our park being abandoned by law enforcement. The camping policy should have ended then. The camping policy should have ended when the park flooded, sending mountains of garbage downstream. This camping policy should have ended when the homeless camps went up in flames, sending exploding propane tanks into the air. This camping policy should have ended when a homeless camper lit a neighboring business on fire, resulting over in a million dollars of damage. This camping policy should have ended when the first homeless camper died in Cascade Gateway Park. Either way, the neighbors of Semke should not be forced to endure this for even one more day. If you want to keep the population in a city park, I would suggest that you open your local park to become a lawless trash dump like ours sadly has become. Please end this now. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Any questions for Cory? All right, Jerry Taylor.
Eric.
Jerry Taylor, 3100 Turner Road. I just noticed the applause when you said you opened up gay trades and all that, but with Cory just spoke, there was no comment. Three times this month, I had to help somebody because somebody is trying to break into their house. Now, see, we didn't get a chance to vote to put them on your property. You voted to put them on my backyard, and that's not right. And, and, and what I'm saying is, I don't know, maybe, maybe some of you council members can celebrate bar. You're celebrating everybody getting out of prison, but how about celebrating Paradise Island being free instead of putting bars on their windows again? Every night we go to bed, we put bars on the window, and, and I'm, I'm not against gay, don't get me wrong, but you have a fridge, the lady just put something around her neck. When, when are we going to celebrate the release of Paradise Island instead of living in fear?
Yes.
And you say, well, everybody has a homeless problem. We do. We, I don't mind if there's some around here, why can't we put them all over town? The church in the park is enabling that people to stay. We give hundreds of dollars, our church, to the homeless people. But again, why can't we do something about this instead of living in fear all the time? Remember, the council has voted to put our park prison bars, and you're not doing nothing about it.
We're seniors.
Any comments?
One.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I think we understand what you're saying.
Well, but you, you said that last time, that's nothing happened. Thank you.
It's on the agenda tonight. Okay, Dory Boy. Momler?
Monbauer.
Momler, I'm sorry, I can't read my own writing.
Hello, my name is Dory Monbauer, and I live at 3100 Turner Road, Paradise Island. Paradise Island was established as a senior community. That means people who are over the age of 55, but most of us now are averaging the age of 80. We're scared to death. That park is also our park, but we can't use it because of the homeless over there and the mess that they've made. It's scary, they're cutting trees down and burning them. Have you, have any of you been there lately to see what it looks like? Could you answer my question, please? Have any of you been there to see what it looks like? And it's in our backyard, these people stroll the streets all night long, we don't know what they're going to do, what they're going to take, or who they're going to harm. It's very scary. We are seniors, we're not just little 20-year-olds, we're seniors, and we're scared. And we feel like the city council hasn't done anything for us. All you care about, and we understand, is the homeless, but we also should be cared about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay.
Of course not.
Darla Adams.
Darla doesn't want to speak. Next.
Bobby Starrett, Bobby Stark.
Hey, Bobby, come on. Come on, Bobby. She's coming.
Okay.
There's a lot of people here.
I was in the back of the crowd, I think. Well, you've seen the pictures. I tried to drive over there. It was impossible, it was very scary. My sister-in-law, her niece, I'm sorry, her daughter, has a, I'm trying to think what it's called, rented space where there was the explosion. That was very scary. And we were over on the hill in South Salem when we saw it happen, things going up in the air and the black smoke, and it was very scary then thinking that her, all of her possessions might have been in, that she was one over from where the burning stopped. So she has a lot of smoke damage, but hopefully that's going to be able to be dealt with. We just, one thing just leads to another, we've seen darted birds. Our wildlife is suffering, and I just, I want you to do something about it. I don't have a suggestion, but Cory has given you a lot of suggestions, and we've listened to them as well, and encouraged him to keep doing the work that he's doing. And he's a great resource, he's very knowledgeable, and if you have any questions about how to do it or where to do it, whatever it is you do, talk to Cory.
Yeah, he, he really has done a great job representing you all, he really has.
But we, you have a lot of people here who are just sitting waiting to see if we can be safe in our homes again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Linda Thomas.
Hello, my name is Linda Thomas. I've lived here for five years, this has always felt like a safe place to live, but not anymore. Since the, many homeless have moved in to Cascade Park, the dynamics have changed on Turner Road. We, like other businesses, have to make sure all we own is locked up in our sheds and carports so that things cannot be stolen night or day. Our fence that separates Cascade Park from Paradise has been cut four times. They have come in and cut locks on sheds and carports and stolen personal items. We have had people robbed more than once. We have a lot of widows, and they have been terrified because they hear people outside their homes talking, and some have had people trying their doors at night. When I drive past the park coming home, I see campfires going and wonder what's happening, what happens as we get further into summer and everything turns dry, and someone decides to have a campfire and it starts a large fire. Well, we are next door. The park, as you know, has experienced large fires caused by one person, and then there's tents that have been burned, and these small fires cause large fires. Campfires are not allowed in Cascade Park, but that does not stop them. They cut down trees in the park for firewood to burn, and they have cut tents on fire from whatever they are doing to stay warm or do their drugs. For us, it is not if there is going to be a major fire, but when? My personal family would prefer that I move because it bothers them that I'm living here next door to a park that has so much happening. They've turned the park into a place that will take years for people to use due to filth and drug paraphernalia. Families are unable to go fishing, have picnic, play frisbee golf, take walks, and have a family day. We know that you don't want this going on over there, but that's what's happened because you've allowed them to come into that park. If you don't, do not start moving the people by the first, then you're asking others to come because people will just feel like they can continue coming into that park. So I know we heard a lot of different plans that people are talking about, but this is something that's happening now, and it bothers us a lot. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Mary Supala.
While Mary is coming. I want council to see how many people are here tonight. Wave your hands, everybody.
Yes.
All vaccinated, here to talk to you.
Do your job. Do your job.
Mary, go ahead.
I am Mary Supala, and I'm a resident of Paradise Island. It has been with great sadness that I have witnessed the destruction of Cascade Gateway Park. Before I retired, I worked at Salem Radiology Consultants. There was a time when Salem Radiology held their annual summer picnic at Cascade Park. It was a great place for our families to gather and enjoy the beautiful setting, games were set up, and our children ran freely through the grass. Well, that ship has certainly sailed. This once beautiful park is now a very undesirable and dangerous park that we can no longer enjoy. It's not safe to walk in, and certainly not safe for children or teens to enjoy. There are needles in the grass from drug users. The once inviting grass is now a danger zone. It is time to move the camp away from Cascade Park. If camping is allowed to take place any longer, Cascade Park will never recover. This is on all of us, and especially those of you in a position of leadership in the city of Salem. Make the right decision. I plead with you to end the camping at Cascade Park now. As I stated earlier, I'm a resident of the Paradise Island community. The demographics of the population of Paradise Island is largely old, and many are of fragile health. Paradise Island has been a precious place to age in place for many elderly people. It has been a safe and beautiful environment. Paradise Island has become a victim of collateral damage due to this camping policy. Since the camping began, there has been criminal activity directly linked to the camps at Cascade Park. The residents of Paradise Island no longer feel safe. We deserve better, you can do better, there are better alternatives. End the camping at Cascade Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary. Are there any questions? Okay, that's all, we have signed up this evening, so I'll move on to our next agenda item.
Please come visit.
Give me just a second.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, could we have a five-minute break?
Yeah, thank you very much. We'll take a five-minute break. See, who are we missing? It's like everybody's here generally. Okay, we're back, back to order, we'll go ahead with the consent agenda, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of, I'm sorry, my list has gotten out of order. You could give me one moment. Sorry about that. I move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of Item 3.3B, pulled by Counselor Anderson, 3.3E, pulled by Counselor Hoy, 3.3F, pulled by Counselor Anderson, and 3.3G, pulled by Counselor Hoy.
Second.
Second by Stapleton. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I could go over the details of what's left. Item 3.1A, the May 10, 2021 draft city council minutes. Item 3.1B, May 17, 2020 draft city council work session minutes. Item 3.2A, dedication of the property as public right-of-way on Lansing Avenue Northeast and Silverton Road Northeast. Item 3.2B, dedication of the westerly 30 feet of Fairview Park as public right-of-way for Lindberg Road Southeast. Item 3.2C, dedication of city property as public right-of-way on Village Center Drive Southeast. Item 3.3A, petition initiation, I'm sorry, petition initiated vacation of a portion of the alley and portion of unopened right-of-way for 12th Street Northeast adjacent to the railroad Northeast of D Street Northeast. Item 3.3C, petition initiated vacation of a portion of an easement over previously vacated George Street Northwest. Item 3.3D, intergovernmental agreement between the City of Salem, Oregon Military Department for Airport Compass Rose recalibration expenses. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Very good. Are there any questions, comments? Hey, could the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Lewis.
I never get to go first. Hi.
Counselor Stapleton.
Hi.
Counselor Anderson.
Hi.
Counselor Phillips.
Hi.
Counselor Leung is absent. Counselor Gonzalez.
Hi.
Counselor Hoy.
Hi.
Counselor Nordike.
Hi.
Mayor Bennett.
Hi. Okay, motion passes. We'll move on then to our public hearings. First one is 21-200. You introduce this.
Yes, the city council will now conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving testimony regarding the 2021 Annual Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant and Home Funding and Amendments to the 2019 and 2020 Annual Action Plans. The hearing will begin with a staff presentation, and no individual signed up to testify. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Kristen, are you?
Yes, on behalf of the Urban Development Department, we're going to have a new face presenting for us. It's not going to be Shella Yinger this evening. She's been very busy working on environmental reviews for Yucquina and other projects so we can get them built. So we have Sal Diaz this evening, who also works in federal programs, who is going to make his first presentation before city council tonight.
Welcome, Sal. Yes, I'm here, excuse me, the lights behind me just went off because there's nobody in the building, and the motion activated, so all of a sudden it got dark and scary in here.
We can see you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Bennett and, and council. I'm Sal Diaz, Federal Programs Manager in the Urban Development Department, and I'm here tonight to present the 2021 Annual Action Plan along with two amendments to prior year plans. If you give me just one quick second, I'll tee this up for a presentation. Mr. Mayor, can you see my, my screen?
I can, yes, thank you.
Okay, and hopefully you see the presentation one and not the one with my notes. Let's see here. Well, as I said, the, the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the, let me go back here, for the public to hear and comment on the proposed amendments to the 2019 and 2020 action plans, as well as to hear the 2021 Annual Action Plan. Currently, the city has a five-year consolidated plan which outlines the city's priorities and goals. This is year two of the consolidated plan, and these are the identified priorities. Number one is ending homelessness, two is expanding affordable housing, three, neighborhood revitalization, and four is to promote economic development. Part of the consolidated plan requires that each year an annual action plan is created to identify which activities will take place within that program year. A required public notice announcing the 2021 Annual Action Plan and modifications appeared in the Statesman Journal on April 16th earlier this year. The public comments received and their responses will be included in the plan, and to date, no public comments have been received. The public comments received and their responses will be included in the plan, and to date, no public comments have been received. I'm going to begin by presenting two amendments, one to the 2019 and another to the 2020 Annual Action Plans. First, Amendment Number Four to the 2019 Plan. This amendment proposes to remove $100,000 in rent and utility assistance, as well as adding three summer programs to be implemented this coming summer for a total of $171,000. And that includes $23,000 for Island Boy Camp for COVID supplies, $12,000 for Saxon Youth Football, also for COVID supplies, and $136,000 for the YMCA for an emergency childcare program. Second is Amendment Number Three to the 2020 Annual Action Plan. And this amendment proposes to add $25,000 to a previously awarded grant for rent assistance, add $37,000 to a previously awarded grant for case management, and remove $200,000 in business assistance, as well as remove $100,000 in rent and utility assistance. And you might be wondering, well, why would we remove funding from these needed programs? So, you know, as you know, 2020 was an irregular year. It threw a curveball at all of us. This curveball came with unforeseen challenges and obstacles for our business partners and program partners. It meant such things as staffing issues, timing issues, locked buildings, literally making it impossible to carry out any of their programs or conduct any business at all. And so rather than make a promise that can't be kept, these organizations made the difficult decision to return the funds, allowing others to possibly utilize them. Lights came on. Now I'm going to transition into the current pool of resources for the 2021-22 Annual Action Plan. Starting at the top and working my way down, you'll see that we have $1.5 million in new CDBG funding, $931,000 in new home funding, $341,000 in unallocated funds from previous years, for a total of $2.8 million. And this does not include any American Rescue Plan Act funds. I'm going to mention those at the conclusion of the presentation. This year, federal program staff recommends funding the following 10 programs. All these programs are aimed to target the four goals and priorities mentioned earlier. And for the sake of saving some time, I'm not going to unpack every single one of these, but I do want to highlight two or three so that you get a general idea. For example, starting at the top and working our way down, let's go to number three, Seed of Faith. We recommend $250,000 for them. This is the second year that we are working with Seed of Faith. They did such a good job with the first round of funding that they made our job to recommend them very easy, and their project is a housing rehab and rental assistance. A little bit further down to number seven, Applegate Landing, $500,000 for them. They're a new partner for us, and what they're doing is they're bringing brand-new construction of affordable housing that is veteran-focused. And then let's do one more. How about number 10, $149,000 for Marion and Polk Food Share. They've been a longtime partner of ours, and they've always done a fantastic job. And so what these funds will do is help them with their continued good work of providing emergency food and meals for seniors and people with disabilities. And you'll see at the bottom that the total is $2.8 million. And so what are next steps? Well, next steps include HUD reviewing and approving this annual action plan, then entering into agreements with our program partners, followed by program implementation. Also, in the not-too-distant future, an amendment to this 2021 Annual Action Plan will be presented to add $2.3 million in home funds to be received as a result of the American Rescue Plan Act, as well as $860,000 in CDBG CD3 funds, which is part of the CARES Act. These funds are not included in the annual action plan now because we've only received notice that we're going to receive them but have not formally been awarded the funds yet, and/or we haven't received guidance on the allowable uses for these funds. And finally, staff will be monitoring program administration and reporting back to council and the public that programs in. This concludes the presentation of the 2021 Annual Action Plan. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you, Sal, very much. Sal, I had one question.
Yes, sir.
I noticed $418,000 unallocated. How will that be dealt with over the next year? What should we be thinking about? What will the city be thinking about in terms of program application for those funds?
No, it's a... Having that money there is both good and bad. It would appear to be bad because it seems like that money is going to be unused, but as you see, for example, opportunities present themselves all the time. So, for example, these three programs right here for the summer programs, those weren't original applications. They came to us unexpectedly. And so we were fortunate enough that we had some of these unallocated funds that we were able to then provide them some funding for those needed projects. You see also here the two top lines for the $25,000 and $37,000. These were existing grantees that had an unforeseen need also come to the surface. And because we had some unallocated funds, that made it possible to provide them additional funding.
Great, thank you. That's helpful. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Diaz, for your presentation. Great job. I had a question about the Applegate Landing, the veterans-focused housing with new construction of 48 units. I believe your presentation shows $500,000 allocated towards that. Can you tell me what will that 500 go towards? And can you tell me roughly the location for Applegate Landing?
Yes, so the Applegate Landing... Let me see if I've got that one here in front of me. Sorry, I don't have all of these programs memorized in detail.
The Applegate Landing is in West Salem.
I believe... Yes, I believe you're right.
And this will be kind of along the alignment of the future Marine Drive or in West Salem. And the funding will be used for construction. This is all new construction.
Correct.
And who's running that program? Applegate Landing.
So it is its own nonprofit that is designing and constructing and operating that.
Great. I can't wait to hear more. This is exciting. Let it not be said, we are investing a ton into supporting and getting as many people off the streets as possible. It just can't happen overnight. Thank you.
And to answer, add a little bit more to Sal's answer to the mayor's question earlier about the money that we haven't allocated. There's so much money that is coming into the region through ARPA and through the CARES Act that is going for tenant assistance and so many different programs. There's a capacity issue with getting it out the door and absorbing it, and a really serious nonprofit capacity issue. All of our nonprofits are trying to hire people to help get the money out the door, and they're struggling with that. So it's not a bad thing right now that some of our money is being held back so that we're not out, you know, competing with them to try to get the money out the door. And then we can identify where there are gaps and where these resources can add the most value.
Thank you. That's really great planning. I really admire you thinking ahead that far on this thing. What a terrible problem to have so much money coming in. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Ms. Rutherford or Mr. Diaz, perhaps you could outline briefly how a program might apply for some of those unallocated resources that we have available, or perhaps for some of the new money that we have coming in. What are the... Just kind of, in general, what would be a qualifying program, and how would they apply?
So at the time that we're ready to move forward with the other funds, we will issue a press release, and we will promote it out to the nonprofits in the community. We do that every year through our annual grant program where we issue the press release. There's a lot of outreach by our staff to nonprofits soliciting applications. So as we move through the summer and into the fall, and as we get the guidance on some of these new funds that are coming to us, we'll go through a similar process where we will advertise it and promote it to the nonprofit community. A lot of the funds that we will be getting will be home funds. And so those funds, I'm guessing right now, will be limited to renovation, construction, or operations of affordable housing. We also continue to have some of our CDBG COVID funds, which are restricted to solutions and programs addressing the impacts of COVID. And so that could be housing. It could be business assistance, rental assistance, those sorts of things.
Ms. Rutherford, one of the things that happens is we, as counselors, get... Members of the council get contacted. Who would our point by various groups? Who would our point of contact be if we hear from, you know, groups in our wards or in the city? Who should we direct them toward, or who should we contact?
To either Sal, or Shelley Yinger, or myself.
Okay.
Or Michael Brown, who... Michael, I think, is on this as well. Michael is new with the city, and he is managing our federal programs division, as well as the financial group within urban development.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Hoy, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. So basically, the general criteria is that they have to somehow fall under those four or five goals that we have listed. So if you're a nonprofit that roughly fits into one of those categories, we have a half a million bucks sitting there. Get ahold of staff. We want to get rid of it. We want to use it in a really good, positive way. So take a look and see if you have something that will fit.
Hey, anyone else? Great job, Sal. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Tom.
It's harder to see me in this room as opposed to...
You're this big.
Yeah, I have a couple comments, one comment, and then some questions. And I appreciate the focus of this plan on geographic distribution, both racially and economically. I think that's very important for our community for a whole lot of reasons, so I'm glad that you're focusing on that. Then just one quick question. I see the money for Dev Northwest. Is that for the project of the old church on Cotty Street?
Correct.
Okay, then, this is some questions, either it might be for Sal or it might be for the director. I'm looking at pages two and three of the actual Annual Action Plan. They're not numbered, but they're the second written page and the third written page. They contain, I don't know, eight to a dozen waivers of this requirement, waivers of that requirement, waiver of some other requirement. And I just want to ask in general, if we're waiving those requirements, is there really even a reason to have the requirements to begin with? In other words, are we putting too much bureaucratic infrastructure on what we want to do? If we waive the requirement to conduct onsite inspections, waive the requirement that TBR recipients least comply with all of these tenant requirements? I mean, why are we waiving them one shot? And if we are waiving them, why don't we waive them more often?
I believe what you're referring to are waivers that HUD has allowed us, things that we can waive due to COVID that we normally could not waive. HUD, when they came out with the COVID funds, put into place a number of modifications to our normal programs and programmatic requirements.
So I understand. It's a one-off deal because of COVID. Then my final question is, and I don't know where I can find it in the report, but I found it. At one point, this report says there are 873 homeless. And I know we just had a meeting, a work session on this issue, and we were told there were 1,888. So is it just different definitions of what homeless is? The HUD definition might be different than the definition we're using with how we do everything we can to take care of our homeless population.
So that number, the way that I came up with that number was I touched base with some of our program partners that we do the annual pit count, the point-in-time count. And so that number came from the most recent data. The most recent pit count numbers are not out yet. And so we had to use the data that was readily available.
Thank you.
Mayor, this is Jose, but before I go, guess Counselor Copcho had a comment, I think, or a question?
I did. You're so kind. You can go ahead if you like.
Mine was simple. Just wanted to thank Mr. Diaz for taking a lot of information and making it nice and simple for us.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, Mr. Copcho.
Yep, mine's much less simple. Thanks. That's why I let you go first, Counselor Gonzalez. I have two real quick. So one, I saw in there in the report the information about the funding, potential funding for additional CARES Act funding or coronavirus relief fund.
Correct.
Their information, maybe it was in a previous session, and so if that's the case, I can look back on the funding that came from the CARES Act as far as urban renewal that's already been utilized in 2020 and up till now. That's already out there.
Can you repeat that one more time?
So is there already information about the CARES Act funding that's been allocated toward these programs?
Yeah, so most of that money has already been allocated to projects. In fact, I think the three programs that I listed there, if I remember correctly, I think those were the remainder funds from the first two rounds of the CARES Act funds. And this is the third round of funding, and we don't have any projects identified for that yet because we don't yet know what the guidance is going to be regarding allowable uses.
True.
The initial awards were made in May and June of 2020, and so they were in the Annual Action Plan and amendments presented to council at the same time one year ago.
Time flies, and you're having fun. Thank you. The second one I have is you mentioned that there's so much money coming into the region that there's a capacity issue in getting it out the door with the nonprofit issues of capacity, right? And so is there any concern about the ability to get funding that is time-sensitive? So like the CARES Act funding, if it's not utilized by the cutoff date, that may not be available. And the same could exist for ARPA funding or the American Rescue Plan Act. So is there any concern that we might be able to, or that we might end up in a situation where we're like, hey, we have this chunk of money left, and no one's coming for it? So that could be more motivation for the council and the city to really get the word out, like this money needs to get spent.
Absolutely, and we have been coordinating and communicating very closely with nonprofits and other entities within the community. And that's one of the reasons that we still have so much of our COVID funding remaining. Is there was a timeline for a number of organizations that got money through the state to have that money expended by the end of December. And so we very intentionally, you know, held back and didn't come out with another round of grants during that same time period for exactly that reason. So we continue that kind of coordination in the region to make sure that we are paying attention to those timelines. Our funding, our home and CDBG funding, has about the longest timeline out of any of those funds.
Great, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Counselor Hoy?
Close the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm going to close the public hearing. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Public hearing. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move City Council adopt Amendment Number Four to the 2019 CDBG Annual Action Plan, Amendment Number Three to the 2020 CDBG Annual Action Plan, and adopt the 2021-2022 Housing and Community Development Annual Action Plan AAP, and direct staff to submit required forms to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
Second by Lewis. You want to say anything?
I think it's all been said. Thank you.
Well said, okay. Could the recorder... Any discussion? Anyone want to... Okay, would the recorder please call a roll?
Counselor Stapleton.
Hi.
Counselor Anderson.
Hi.
Counselor Phillips.
Hi.
Counselor Leung is absent. Counselor Gonzalez.
Hi.
Counselor Hoy.
Hi.
Counselor Nordike.
Hi.
Counselor Lewis.
Hi.
Mayor Bennett.
Hi. Okay, motion passes. Let's go to our next public hearing then.
The City Council will now conduct a public hearing concerning an exemption from the competitive bidding process and authorization of an alternate contracting method for the Garin Island Water Treatment Plant Filter Number Two Reconstruction Project. The public hearing will begin with the staff presentation and no individuals signed up to testify, I think.
Okay, public hearings open. Who are we? Brian?
Yes. Good evening. Yes, I'm going to go ahead and start and introduce a new speaker for our team as well. Brian Martin, City Engineer. John Kennedy is going to do the presentation tonight. John has been managing the ozone treatment facility and the well out at Garin Island. He's also going to manage the reconstruction of filter number two. So John is prepped and ready to go.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Mayor Bennett and City Council members. Tonight, we're seeking your approval as the local contracting review board to exempt the city from competitive bidding process, also known as the design bid build process. Your approval tonight will, will allow an alternate contracting method known as construction manager slash general contractor, CMGC for short. And we will use this method to select a contractor for the next large project that's coming up at Garin Island. It will, the filter number two reconstruction project. Filter number two, the filter number two improvements recently was granted $20 million from, from the state for funding. The CMGC form of contracting will allow us to bring a contractor onboard early during the design process. And this has a number of benefits, including the contractor will be able to provide input to our design team for things like value engineering. They will identify cost effective project phases. They provide input on constructability. They provide real time information on market conditions for managing project costs. And most importantly, they, they, it allows us to start construction early on, on items that the design, you know, is finished. And we can complete ahead of the entire design package. It, bottom line, it helps the schedule. The selection process for a CMGC contractor is a competitive process that relies on multiple criteria, including contractors qualifications, their prior experience working on similar projects, and their project approach. It also includes costs for pre-construction support, overall staff cost, which includes overhead and profit. Once a CMGC is under contract, they will become a working member of our project team. They'll help provide information to the designers and they help us implement cost effective solutions. As design progresses, the CMGC contractor will begin preparing a guaranteed maximum price for all improvements that will be constructed. Once the guaranteed maximum price has been established through negotiations, any savings in construction will be returned to the city. This is the same project delivery method that is currently being used on the ozone treatment plant at Garin Island. It's also being used at the Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project in Woodsman Z Park. It was also used successfully on the Salem Police Facility. We believe this is the best project delivery approach for filter number two improvements at Garin Island, as it will allow us to obtain the services of the most qualified contractor that can complete the project on a tight schedule and at a price that will be lower than the design bid build process. That ends my presentation.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Okay, yeah. Counselor Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, and thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for that presentation. For the, for those of us who are a little newer, kind of like walk me through why this particular project would benefit from this technique, which seems to have been successful for those other, you know, projects that you just listed out. And like, I guess, why isn't this the norm if it is so effective?
Usually, we target this, this method when schedule is critical. The, all of the work that we're undertaking at Garin Island with the, from the standpoint of trying to get Garin Island up to date and prepared for future algal toxin blooms. This project is one of those key pieces of getting our water treatment plant ready and get it ready as soon as possible. So that is reason number one. The second, and it's really a fundamental aspect of CMGC construction, is that it's a way that the owner can reduce risks, limit risks and exposure. And we, you know, I think the design bid, the traditional design bid build approach to projects is what most public agencies are very comfortable with. It's tried, true, you know, proven. We understand it. It also is the most reliable way to make sure we got the lowest price. But the low price bidder is not always the best contractor. Again, using CMGC on selected, specific projects, that there's a good reason to use it. It's, it's a really smart thing to do to reduce risk, reduce exposure. And again, number one, reduce schedule.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Copcho.
So as a, an accountant, I have a certain appreciation for, for contract accounting and cost accounting. I know CMCG, I think better as construction manager at risk, same thing. Is there any, any indication of an ability to require like an open book policy so that the city would be able to see line items for overhead costs, markups, various contingencies, that sort of thing throughout the, the project?
Yeah, it's totally open book. And to the extent that we, we negotiate what their, what the profit is, they, there really is no, nothing's hidden. And, and part of the selection process is we look at, at the other, you know, we may get three or four different firms that want to be the CMGC on this project. And one of the evaluation criteria will be their profit margin or their markup. And it's referred to as the CMGC fee. But as Brian mentioned, I'm the project manager for the current ozone construction, which is a CMGC project. I review the contractor's monthly billings. And we literally, we get copies of every postage stamp. So we, we see every nickel and dime that's spent on that project. And it is an open book.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Hey, any further questions? Yes, Counselor Stapleton.
Anyso much. I was just wondering, curious here, as to where, you've said you've done this before, so or are doing it. The firms that are applying for this or going to bid for this, are they local or is it more out of state or even international firms? I know this is kind of a specialty thing as well, so.
So we, right now, we know of three firms that are very interested in the project. Two are local. One is Slaton, who's the same contractor that's doing ASR. They have done a CMGC project at the, at the wastewater treatment plant. They just recently finished a cogent facility at the wastewater treatment plant. And they're also our contractor right now, working for me on the ozone project. So they are literally right next door. Their office is just like two miles, three miles from the project site. So in their back door. The other contractor, local contractor, is the Emery and Sons, and they've done a lot of work for the city. They've done a lot of work at Garin Island. The third one that we know of is a very large company, Keywood, which national presence. And so that's, that's great to get. If we can get three proposals, that will be great for the city to, you know, have a little competition here. And there may be four or five, you know, we may get a few more that we just haven't seen it. And we haven't advertised yet because obviously we're here tonight to get your approval before we advertise.
Thanks for the info.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to close the public hearing. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move City Council, adopt resolution number 2021-20 in support of an exemption from the competitive bidding process and use a CMGC contracting method with the Garin Island Water Treatment Plant Filter Number Two Reconstruction Project.
Second. Second by Counselor Phillips.
I have nothing to add.
Nothing to add. Does anyone have anything to add? Okay, if the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Anderson.
Hi.
Counselor Phillips.
Hi.
Counselor Leung is absent. Counselor Gonzalez.
Hi.
Counselor Hoy.
Hi.
Counselor Nordike.
Hi.
Counselor Lewis.
Hi.
Counselor Stapleton.
Hi.
Mayor Bennett.
Hi. Okay, motion passes. All right, we'll move on to special orders of business. You recall, we have a batch of them this evening, so I'll start through. We're going to start with 5A. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move City Council, adopt resolution 2021-21 to extend the declaration of emergency related to COVID-19 until December 13th, 2021, and rescind the allowance for camping in Cascades Gateway and Wallace Marine Parks.
Second. Second by Lewis.
Thank, this one, I do have a few comments on, Mr. Mayor, on my own behalf. And then I have also one on behalf of Counselor Leung that she asked me to share with the group.
Thank you.
So, you know, some of the, the things I wanted to talk about on this resolution were, I stated earlier, as in response to public comment. But I think that removing this, the camping with a date certain is a way to hold ourselves accountable. Now, we know that camping will not end on June 1st, but it's, it's the beginning of the end. And actually, it's already begun. It's been going for a few weeks now. Staff have been working, our nonprofit partners have been working to come up with better options, better solutions for folks. And I know we've received a lot of emails saying, don't end the, don't end the camping right now until there's a humane solution in place. And I agree with the sentiment of that, but we have to hold ourselves accountable. We have to get that process moving and we need alternatives for people. I don't want just people kicked out of the park and into a worse situation or a similar situation. I want, and we've directed the city manager to do this work, and I believe he and staff are doing so. They're developing alternatives, and we have a number of them coming online over the next several weeks and months. We may hear about some of them tonight. We may not. But I believe it will be a, a sort of a, a process that will allow people into a better, a better outcome. And I think it's the right thing to do, and I'm supportive of this motion. Now, on behalf of Counselor Leung, I'm going to read a statement. So know that these are her words, and she asked me to share them with you. "I have concerns about rescinding the camping policy without having a plan in place for the unsheltered who are staying at the parks. My concern is the humane relocation of the community into proper and safe settings and doing so in a way that ensures their safety and property is not damaged in the process." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Hoy. Mr. Manager, did you want to make any comments on this as we move through this, you or Ms. Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Thank you, councilors. First, I want to thank you for your discussion and guidance last week at the work session. I hope you find the resolution is, is responsive to those questions and concerns you raised, the questions and concerns you raised on behalf of, of your constituents. The city, the region really, is in a sheltering crisis. And the COVID crisis, the COVID pandemic, just accelerated and exacerbated what was already a very challenging situation for our unhoused residents, as well as organizations, including the city, that is trying to frankly, not only try to help and connect people with services, but our responsibility has, has been pointed out to manage our public spaces, to manage our, our city spaces, whether that's rights of way or parks. And, and that's been exceedingly challenging this year. I, I, I thank the, the maker of the motion for, for the comment regarding accountability. And, and I do promise you, counsel, and, and promise the community that we will be accountable for following through on this resolution if it were to pass. And that follow through, that follow up includes work to restore the parks to the best of our ability, to continue our humanitarian approach to connecting people with services and to eventually housing. That is also extremely challenging for the reasons that all of you know, the multiple barriers that many of our unsheltered residents experience, the lack of supply. And, you know, we're going to continue to make progress in that area. It will be slow and it will be gradual and it will be expensive. And I will have recommendations for you at your next meeting regarding the city's commitment with our funding to make a difference, to make progress in that area. There has been recent publicity regarding the, and it was mentioned tonight, regarding one of the project turnkey additions to our sheltering capacity. And I will be recommending that the city help fund that, that acquisition. A relatively small portion of that overall project budget that will add 80, 80 rooms for an estimated 110 to 115 individuals. That's one example, and we'll have several more specific additions to our, our sheltering. And when I say our, our region's sheltering inventory for your June 14th meeting. We do have staff available, including Gretchen Bennett and Chief Womack and Mark Bechtel and Peter Fernandez. If, if councilors have questions regarding our gradual approach, Dan Attress in the city attorney is, is prepared to answer questions you might have regarding the resolution itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Yes, I must thank the staff for the, for the report. I've got, I've got one question. And it's on the bottom of page one. And it reads, "The reduction of camping in Cascade Gateway and Wallace Marine Parks will be a gradual process that is operationally sustainable over an extended period." Operational, operationally sustainable over extended period. Could you break that down for me?
Well, first, I'll, I'll define it, and then perhaps if there are questions on the specifics with help from staff, we'll attempt to answer your question, Counselor. That, that language is important to me and why I added it to the report. Because this isn't going to be a, a, a short term, immediate effort. We will have those targeted efforts at both parks, and those efforts will be ongoing and will be part of our, our operations, particularly public works and, and police. We have learned that to have individuals move to appropriate shelter, appropriate places to house themselves and their belongings requires really a team effort of, of first outreach by either our Salem Housing Authority staff or nonprofit partners with police coming in and posting and talking to the individuals. And then our, our public works and contractors coming in and removing whatever material has been left behind by those who were sheltering where they were not supposed to. And that will be an ongoing effort that will be budgeted and, and will be a priority for us.
Mr. Powers, one, one question that I, I get really constantly, I'm sure other councilors do as well, is as this progresses, will we see a, sort of a migration of people being dislocated into our downtown area? That was one of the really driving forces behind this, was trying to get a handle on that problem and then also deal with COVID, all the rest of the, the issues that were in play when this went into effect. Can you kind of talk about how that's going to be managed?
We will work with property owners, whether they're downtown or elsewhere in the city. If individuals are sheltering on, on, on private property. If individuals are sheltering on 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 private property, if people are sheltering in the downtown on sidewalks, we will continue to talk with those who are unsheltered and encourage them to go through the steps necessary to be eligible for services, and if they are eligible for services, to get into those services, including housing. We will continue to work with property owners as well as our own property at the parades, for example, on on maintaining public property, which does involve the, you know, relocation of individuals. That will be part of our our approach of encouraging people to to shelter in appropriate locations while we're adding additional shelter capacity.
Will there be a concerted effort? I because I know we've got folks out at Paradise Island, who are very, obviously have been and will continue to be, and very, very concerned about their own security. Will we be targeting that area of Cascade Gateway that puts so many folks without houses right up against the fence and next door to folks, and really creates a security, whether concern or reality? I think several times we keep hearing the reality of people right up against virtually their backyards. Are we gonna move folks away from those very sensitive areas for this for this group of senior citizens?
Our our efforts so far and the efforts in the future will certainly focus first on those areas where people should not be sheltering, such as the areas that you just described, Mayor, the developed portion of Cascades Gateway. Gretchen Bennett can speak to it in more detail. The efforts, you know, clearly are at times unsuccessful and and temporary, and and I think going back to, you know, Counselor Lewis's question, that's again why we're emphasizing the operationally sustainable, because we're gonna have to keep keep at the encouragement, the motivation for for people to shelter elsewhere. Again, as far as the specifics and perhaps some some examples of the actions we have taken, I'd ask Gretchen Bennett to to share that with with counsel.
Gretchen, do you?
Yeah, what we're we're recognizing that there's criteria in selecting the sections really to recognizing that we're needing to go area by area. We're wanting to select those sections like within maybe ten days to two weeks so that we can really take in real-time context. Like, for example, the area at South Paradise, at South Cascade Gateway Park, for example, which is right near the Paradise Island Mobile Home Community and the Church at the Park area, we think will be the most successful ultimately when we can open a managed operation that the Church at the Park operates and be able to see a significant shift there. We think we'll be the most successful with that particular area when we can accomplish that, and that'll be an example of a recommendation we bring you at the June fourteenth meeting. The other criteria that we're paying attention to includes the needs of our park users, includes whether or not areas of camping have been maintaining physical distancing and social distancing for COVID nineteen, whether or not how how's the health and the sanitation of that particular section. So as we're grabbing sections to work on, we would be paying attention to all of these factors at at both locations.
Well, I just from my perspective, and I don't know how anyone else feels about that. I really hope you will look very closely at that sector adjacent to Paradise Island. That is really troubling and has been for some time, for the past year apparently, but got really has gotten really, really bad. So just share that with you. Counselor Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, and thank you, Steve Powers and Gretchen Bennett for being here to present this, and I do see and appreciate the modification to this resolution compared to when we discussed it in the in the work session, and and I think it makes me more likely to support this resolution. That being said, I remind myself of the time when I served on the Homeless Solutions Task Force, and Kara Kaiser said, this is not a feel-good task force. This decision is not a feel-good decision. I mean, I think a lot of people have already brought up important points. The reason why we got here has a large in part to do because of the pandemic, and and people may see this as an unmitigated failure that that we did this, but I I disagree. I mean, I think that there's a possibility, if not a probability, that taking emergency action did save lives. Now, saying that, there are limitations to unmanaged camping, and I think we've all learned that, you know, maybe painfully, that there are extreme limitations to unmanaged camping. Personally, just a comment before I ask my question, I want to see us more and more move to managed camping, so I'm very heartened to hear that that we're gonna have some options to pursue, you know, as soon as, you know, our next meeting in June. That's fantastic. We need more of that. I think most of us had a chance to tour what happened at the pavilion, and it's just incredible, like, you know, seeing people go to work, you know, fifteen percent of the people there, you know, were able to go get on with their life. So, you know, there there's a huge difference there, and this isn't managed camping. So one of the reasons why I'm willing to try and reorganize this is to get us away from that unmanaged aspect. Now, I did have a journalist reach out to me, local journalists reach out to me today regarding a question, which is, now that we have the language about the gradual process, and I appreciate that language, do we have any, you know, rough estimate of what that looks like in terms of like how many people per day? I mean, I I I will get off and let you guys start start answering that question, but I I do have some fears of like what my shifts in early June are gonna look like in the emergency room if we start, you know, displacing a couple hundred people a day. So help me be less scared.
Thank you. One of the things we're we're also conscious of is the capacity of the alternative locations, the capacity of the contractors that we need to hire for cleaning. Remember, we've lost quite a few cleaning resources. Cleaning, I'm a quick segue I mentioned is just critical, because if you don't remove the litter and the garbage and the items that are not personal property, you risk having the camp repopulate. As soon as you ask some people to leave, other people will come in, so it's really critical, the order of operations, to ensure that cleaning happens. That's why I bring that up. So for all of those factors, right now, what we can see is a weekly project where we work on a particular zone or area each week. And we have not yet penciled out how long that would take. I think we're wanting to see how successful we are with some initial project areas, again, beginning based on those criteria. Like, we're working this week in the area at Wallace Marine Park that is near the overflow parking lot at Wallace Marine Park. We're anticipating hosting softball this weekend, and we need the parking, and that wasn't one of the areas we had intended for camping, and so we're gonna be working in that particular parcel this week. So we're thinking weekly, and each area might be a bit different in terms of size. I I don't see us having the ability to work with as many as hundreds of people on a daily basis. I'm thinking this is smaller chunks, recognizing the doability aspect of it.
Thank you for that, and just to follow up on this, I mean, I I think that communication is gonna be very helpful, so as much as is possible to communicate that to the service providers who are there, so they kind of know what to expect as well. I think that would be helpful.
Thank you. I'd like to make a quick comment on that, if you don't mind. Salem Health invested in a platform called Basecamp, which brings together a variety of people who work from in the nonprofit community and people who are advocates. So it's been a wonderful tool for us to be able to share information about specific areas that we're working in, and we can instantly, I think we instantly reach ninety-seven people who work in the area each time we make a post. So I agree, and just wanted to appreciate that investment that happened last year in the Salem area.
And if I may, Mayor, Gretchen, perhaps quickly also speak to the outreach we're doing with those individuals who are sheltering in the parks?
Certainly, yeah. We we have distributed some information that is not only including the note about June first and the resolution, but also the, there's a QR code that allows a person to scan to be able to get to services, as well as several local phone numbers that encourage connection to services, as well as some COVID nineteen reminders to to communicate with everyone that's there. There sure are, there sure are needs. All of your work in advocacy in the area of behavioral health and mental health, for example, I really can't say enough about. We've heard some communications from community members that speaks to some of the significant challenges some of the people who are camping face. Schizophrenia, some really serious mental illness, and and we're working to, the those are some are gonna be some of the hardest situations, because we just don't have the infrastructure and the appropriate kind of housing and resource for those populations, for example.
Very good. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gretchen, first a question. Do you have any idea about approximately how many people might actually be in Cascade Gateway Park?
Thank you. I don't have a very precise estimate. Our Salem Police Department bicycle team is gonna be riding around and counting the number of tents and as one indicator, and then we're gonna be able to measure from that. So.
Because now my my comment is that, and the city attorney laid this out, and I discussed this at our last our work session, we are restricted by what we want to do or could do, I should say, by a Circuit Court of Appeals case on a Boise that that affects us. We're in the Ninth Circuit, so we've got limitations on how we can do that, and one of those limitations is we can't just go and kick everybody out if if we don't have other places for them to go. I mean, that's I'm simplifying that, but that's the situation. The next thing I want to say, and I agree with the emphasize what the mayor said, is we have had some pretty powerful testimony from the folks in Paradise Island. Tonight, work session, every meeting, Mr. Poole has done an excellent job of bringing this to our attention. That Paradise Island is in my ward. I've been out there personally at meetings, and I've gotten some, again, powerful and understandable testimony about how this affects these people's daily lives. And just speaking generally, Semc and Paradise Island is right next to what's going on in Cascade Parks. For the most part, it's not quite the same in Wallace Marine Park. I mean, you just mentioned something you wanted to do that relates to a recreational softball activity as opposed to people living right next to it. So I would urge that that the city spend as much effort as they can going to Cascade Gateway first to relieve that problem, because that is affecting how people live their daily lives. And I know Counselor Lewis and Counselor Stapleton are, will talk about Wallace Marine Park, and yes, there are some folks who live close to Wallace Marine Park, but we're not getting the same kind of testimony from them that we've gotten from Paradise Island. So I would really urge that that we move as quickly as possible to relocate the folks who are in Cascade Gateway Parks, and I also emphasize, it's not their status is homelessness people that is the problem. It's the the actions they take and the crime they commit. That's that's where we gotta stop that. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counselor Lewis, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I I would encourage the city to continue the process that they have already started on, working on both parks at the same time. Because the Cascade Gateway Park has a has a true lobbyist in Mr. Poole, doesn't mean that the situation there is any worse than it is in Wallace Marine Park and the surrounding area. But I also want to thank Counselor Anderson for for bringing up something that the staff report really shines clearly to me, and that is the result of the Martin v. Boise case. And in that case, an individual who had the opportunity to go to a shelter said, I don't want to because it's not my religion. And that homeless person was successful in court. That's what the Boise case is. That led our city attorney to write this sentence in his staff report. "It is likely that even if Salem had a variety of shelter options available, some individuals would have court-recognized justifications for not using those options." It's been a couple of months now since Jimmy Jones said in an article, "At some point, we are going to have to address the people who simply will not move." I believe that time is now. In conjunction with this effort, I want to make sure that we are going to be able to do the work that we need to and not have it take years to accomplish. And if I understood Counselor Hoy correctly, he would like to see a a date that we hope to be done by, and I absolutely agree with that.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. Counselor Stapleton?
I have a lot of, just apology upfront, I have a lot of thoughts going on in my head. And so I'm gonna try and get them out, and I and I want to say that although I recognize the sense of urgency that the public testimony has brought to the issue at Cascade Gateway Park, I am with Counselor Lewis on that. The issue is still present in both areas, and and I really feel like both areas should be taken care of, hopefully the same time, but of course, taking into account the most sensitive areas in both parks and trying to help in those situations first. My mind is just totally all over the place. So much to think about. And I I think that having a date to start is 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 really important. I I think that it's not going to take years. I don't think that that's staff's idea, and in my mind, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong. It it, to me, we start June, and we hopefully end, you know, within several months, and and I that's the vibe that I've gotten in the conversations I've had, and I just want to just confirm is that, you know, Counselor Lewis said years, and all of a sudden I go, ah, what are we doing here? So I just want to be sure that I am thinking the same thing that you are.
That's been my working impression, too, is the the landscape is in the months and certainly not in the years category.
Yeah. And lastly, I just want to just say, I really, really appreciate all of staff's time and all my fellow counselors, their time and attention to this matter. I know that sometimes, well, all the time, so much work is going on behind the scenes, and and it doesn't always get, you know, seen or recognized by people, and and I understand people's frustrations that things aren't moving fast enough, and so I just want to take the opportunity to not only say, I recognize that it's frustrating for our residents to have this issue taking so long and having their lives really affected. I recognize that, and I also want to take an opportunity to thank staff for the really hard work that they're doing and trying to end the crisis that we do have. So, thanks.
Counselor Nordike?
Thank you. I appreciate everything that my colleagues have said. I think we are united in purpose. We want folks out of the parks and into stable housing as soon as possible, but we don't have all that stable housing today. We just voted earlier tonight to direct staff to pursue hundreds of thousands of dollars in federal funds for affordable housing and case management services. We know what work we are doing to make a dent in homelessness. And the reality is, we didn't get here overnight. Homelessness is a crisis decades in the making. A lot of it has to do with the system act decline in mental health services at the federal level. Frankly, I would love to see mental health services triple across the state. That would significantly reduce chronic homelessness. We had a work session recently where forty-nine percent of our local homeless population is chronically homeless, some of the most difficult cases. That means that those people have not had safe and reliable housing for years, and there can be a whole series of comorbidities that can go with it, physical disabilities, intellectual disabilities, mental illness, substance abuse, and so on, sometimes all happening at the same time. So there's no doubt in my mind that this is a perfect storm that led us to this point, in addition to the pandemic and the wildfires. I have volunteered at both homeless areas. I've toured Cascade Gateway. I've toured Wallace Marine. I've gone deep into the woods with people like Corey Poole, with homelessness advocates. I've talked with homeless persons there. There are people who have fled the wildfires and are staying in our parks, and there are people who have had to become homeless because they had cancer. in our parks. And there are people who have had to become homeless because they had cancer and couldn't afford the medical treatment. And on and on the stories go. To Counselor Phillips's point, you know, there was an article in the Salem Reporter in August of last year that indicated that we avoided an outbreak in COVID by having tents, because there's something about the low rate of transmission of COVID in outdoor environments. And by having people in tents, that is warmer than having them on a street with no shelter of any kind. So, this was never intended to be a permanent solution, but I dare say it saved lives by giving people an opportunity to be socially distanced and to at least have a tent over their heads. But we all know it's not trauma informed to tell people to leave a, a camp without having a place to go. And I think, again, we are united in purpose in making that happen. My question would be, I recently toured a pallet shelter option that is available through a local business, not the pallet shelters out of Portland Road, which is already up and running and at capacity like that. But there was another option that we looked at that cost less than five grand apiece. That's another potential tiny home solution. And the way the business owner described it to me is that you could even cite them on a floodplain, which would be a huge benefit because we don't have exactly a lot of available land right now that is not on a floodplain, that is not already being used for something else, that is not owned by us. Gretchen, do you have any updates for us in terms of using a floodplain or that type of space to site managed camps?
Thank you. Well, it does open up, it does open up the doors, doesn't it? I'm talking with the engineering team right now to try to understand exactly what type of land and what level of floodplain that that could open up for us, because it reconnects me to several property areas that initially we weren't able to do. And yeah, one of the things you're going to see at the June fourteenth meeting is a recommendation around budget authority for acquisition of more of these types of shelters that will help us with outdoor sites.
Great. I just can't happen soon enough, but I, I, I feel that having toured a lot of potential properties, having been told no by private landlords who are not interested in leasing to us, I feel both the frustration, but also the determination to keep pushing. And I know we have a lot of projects in the works and we will keep it up. But, you know, I urge anyone, if you've never worked in volunteering with the unsheltered, now is the time to help ease this transition, to help make it sustained, sustainable and humane. Now is the time to really lean in and be a part of the solution, however you feel comfortable doing so. So, if you have any questions about how to do that, the city website is full of volunteer opportunities with our incredible array of service providers in the area who'd be more than happy to take a couple hours of your time or a couple dollars out of your pocket to help be a part of the solution.
Thank you, Counselor. Is that you, Jose? Go ahead.
No, thanks, Mayor. You know, so I, I intend to vote in favor of this motion. But, you know, we, we have a true human crisis here in our city limits. Safety of our neighbors is affected by these decisions, just like we heard earlier. And this issue is one I think about the most. It worries me the most because I was a homeless parent. You know, and, and whether this motion passes or not, as a city, you know, we need to, and whatever we're calling it managed camping, you know, we need to be fluid and be able to adjust services like police, garbage services, graffiti abatement, fire, not sure if the fire marshal is able to visit these camps. You know, and this is both for the safety of the neighbors and for the people living within the camps. You know, and eventually it'd be great to hear what kind of services are offered to give them a hand up to, to help them with economic opportunity, like streamlining the disability services, for example. And if there aren't a lot of these services, then the city should be a catalyst for that. The two questions I have, the first one is, do we see the upcoming reduction in the social distancing requirements? You know, as those start being faded out, are we going to be able to increase the amount of people within the shelters? That's the first question. And the second one is, are we going to be able to prioritize the people that were living in the camps? And as we find spaces for them, are we able to prioritize? Because that was a concern that the neighbors in my neighborhood had with regards to the state fairgrounds site, the, the inability to be able to prioritize. It was more of a first come, first served basis. And that automatically puts a certain group at a disadvantage.
Thank you. Yes, to answer your first question, yes. Once the, the guidelines shift, we should be able to see more people in the congregate shelter kinds of settings and be able to go back to capacity at the shelter sites. I'm not certain when that moment will be, but I know that will help with expanding capacity. To your question about the waitlist, yeah, that, that was, it's an interesting, it's an interesting challenge. Different sites that are operated by nonprofits will sometimes have particular populations that they're trying to serve first, and they can utilize our coordinated entry system to help identify people who might fit the bill. For example, with a hotel program that opened, the program targeted people who had, who were medically fragile and met the CDC guidelines for what that looks like, and then worked hard to find those particular people through the coordinated entry system and through outreach to get them connected. The, there's the, uh, Housing and Urban Development, as I understand it, actually does not recommend using those systems for temporary emergency general low barrier shelter because they can delay people being able to get in and access. And because apparently there's so much challenge in being able to reach people on the lists that, that it slows things down. So it becomes incumbent on the system to have a really equitable approach to try to communicate across the board to people who may be needing it, to help people get transportation or remove barriers so that there's not a lack of fairness and, and maybe the fittest get there quickly, for example, at the expense of people who might have some mobility challenges, just for example. So there's challenges in how to, how to open a shelter in a way that's equitable. We're also dealing with as a region, some other shifts from other, other places that you know we have sheltering happening that we'll be concluding, and that'll compound the issue as we have, we have people beyond the people in Cascades and Wallace that are looking for places to be. And I, I might add your, to a point you made recently, communicating about what we have is going to be really important in an equitable way, communicating what we don't have, to be honest with people who are out there who might be thinking, okay, a home is opening for me, or a shelter bed is opening, to be able to communicate the limitations of our region as well, seems important. So people can, can recognize the reality and make choices too. When possible, I speak about choices as though that's always doable for people. And I recognize sometimes people are dealing with so much trauma or so many health barriers that that's not, that's not workable for, for everyone by any means.
Okay, Mr. Capro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be brief. Hearing this discussion take place tonight along with the previous agenda item of the United Way Cottage is, it reminds me, and, and this discussion that just took place with Counselor Gonzalez's very good questions, reminds me the, the important fact that homelessness is a tremendously complex issue, whether it's chronic homelessness, which is what most folks think of when they hear this discussion, or transitional homelessness, which is the most common, common type of homelessness, where folks will briefly enter a temporary housing system and, and then be out. It's a, it's a structural problem caused by poverty, inadequate services supports, lack of affordable housing. But when we view it through that, that lens, a lot of what Gretchen was just saying, we gloss over some of the intersectional factors, whether it's mobility, whether it's systemic racism, stigmatization of mental health, or substance use disorder. And so to hear that additional shelters will be coming slowly, or housing will be stood up over a, a period of time, there, there's that component of services and supports that has to take place. And that's going to take a broader regional investment to be, to be necessary in order to mitigate the further risk of, of houselessness down the line. And so finally, a, a number of cities in the West and Pacific Northwest who have city auditors have conducted in-depth audits of their houselessness situations to their specific city, because it varies, you know, obviously from city to city, to provide their leaders with specific strategies, benchmarks, and steps to address this systemic issue. And I think it sure would be nice if we had that same capability.
Thank you for that advertisement there. Any, any other, go ahead, Vanessa. Did you have some? No, you're just waving? You're giving a thumbs up on that one? Okay. Anyone else? All right, we'll go ahead and have the, um, recorder call roll.
Counselor Phillips?
Hi.
Counselor Leung is absent. Counselor Gonzalez?
Hi.
Counselor Hoy?
Hi.
Counselor Nordike?
Hi.
Counselor Lewis?
Hi.
Counselor Stapleton?
Hi.
Counselor Anderson?
Hi.
Mayor Bennett?
Hi. Okay, motion passes. We'll move then to the polls. Counselor Anderson, you're up first with three point three B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the purposes of discussion, I move that we adopt the 2021 Gear Park Master Plan.
Second.
Second by Hoy. Go ahead then, Tom, what's your?
Thank you. In general, I, I think this is a very good plan, but I really have some questions about the parking requirement, especially in light of the climate action plan that we're pursuing that says we, we get fifty-three percent of our greenhouse gas emissions come from transportation issues. And the vast majority of that is single cars. And then, but we also hear that, well, gee, we're, when we expand the park to have softball fields and more soccer fields and everything else, we're going to be hosting regional events and people are going to come in. Well, I don't know how often regional events happen, but it's not on a daily or even a weekly basis. And right now, we've got two hundred twenty-one parking spaces at, at Gear, at Gear Park, and the proposal is to add ninety-four. So let's assume that they're not all single occupancy vehicles, but let's assume there's two per average. And I think you could assume that because there's going to be there watching their kids play and everything else. So that means already we have four hundred and fifty parking, of, of, parking spaces available for about four hundred and fifty people. We want to add another two hundred people to it. And that's, we're looking at six hundred, six hundred and fifty people. And that, that just seems like that's overbuilding to solve a problem that may or may not be there. So I'm very concerned about the parking requirement. And, um, uh, you know, we've got some pretty good email testimony on that. So I'd like to see the broader discussion from staff and from other counselors about this. And then protect, potentially, assuming I can do this city attorney, I may be offering an amendment to my own motion.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would be interested to know how we calculate those, the number of parking spaces. I don't know what that process is. I would be interested in hearing about that. Before I go further though, I would like to stop and say that I very much appreciate the work of Park Planner Rob Romanek. He has done an excellent job interfacing with the NESCA Neighborhood Association, and I'm sure others. I have been present at three or four times when he's been at that Neighborhood Association interfacing on this plan. And he has been very responsive to the input he has received and to the concerns of the neighbors. Just as recently as, I think it was last Tuesday, he heard about problems, a significant problem with nutria in the area, in the park and the surrounding area, and took steps to start to mitigate that. And not that that has anything to do with the master plan necessarily, but it's just an example of the fine work he's been doing. I, so I, I am interested to know about the parking. The other thing I, I just want to put out there, and please don't read too much into this, but Gear Park, should it be developed, will be the closest dog park to my part of town. Currently, I, you know, I think the closest dog park from my house is about, I think it's almost seven miles. Minta Brown is over nine miles from my house. There aren't places in my part of town, East Salem, to take, take your dog. You can't take your dog on the bus. I'm a strong advocate for public transit, but if I want to go to the dog park with my dog, I can't use the bus. And so I do reckon, and I'm very appreciative that there is going to be a dog park in Gear Park. And that was not part of the original plan, but because of the feedback staff received, it will be. I would like to see it be a little bit bigger than it is, and I would like to see some of the multi-use fields be a little bit smaller, because I think there's a huge unmet need for dog parks in Salem in general and specifically out in my area. So, all that being said, I would like to hear more about how, how did we calculate how many parking places we may need in our particular park?
Just one, one second on that. Chris, are you looking at an amendment to enlarge the dog park as well? Are you thinking about that tonight?
I wasn't, I'm not prepared to offer an amendment tonight. I know Rob Romanek and I have had some good conversations about it. And I vowed to him that I would use my position to advocate for an enlargement to that park, if that's necessary, to see that happen. I don't want to use politics to undermine good staff work, but I'm hoping that he will hear my plea and perhaps make an adjustment based on that. I don't know.
Yeah. Counselor Anderson, I hope that sounded interesting, like that approach might be one we want to follow tonight without playing city attorney yet.
Maybe.
Uh, Tom, you want to explain how you got to these numbers? Or Peter?
It's, well, Mayor, it's, it's Rob. Oh, yeah, yeah, it's okay. Yeah, so, so Mr. Romanek is here, and he's our, I appreciate Counselor Hoy's endorsement of, of Mr. Romanek. He has in fact been doing a great job for us and has done many, many Parks Master Plans that you've seen come through over the last couple of years. So he's here to explain the master planning process and the, the parking issues in particular. Take it away, Rob.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and, and counselors. I'll, I'll begin on the parking issue. So the question about how we come up with the numbers, so this, this project, we have a consultant on the, on the team, Green Works, who has done several Park Master Plans for the city, recently Riverfront and Battle Creek Parks. They, they look at the proposed facilities that, that we're adding to the park, and they use their professional judgment to come up with quantities to serve those facilities. And I'm going to go a little step beyond that, to say that through this process, we, we presented three concepts to the community for, for discussion and feedback. And those, those concepts kind of ranged in intensity, kind of a little bit more than what we're proposing today and a little bit less. And all those proposed to add at least a hundred and forty to a hundred and eighty new parking spots. However, the public process and community input, we heard a desire to really keep that minimum. We're not going to build the park for that peak use day when there might be a, a tournament there. So that's where we, you know, the consultants derived that number ninety-four parking stalls. And, and so again, that's, on, on their experience, working for other states, and also what we're proposing to add to the park. The, the fact of the matter is, is there's no, the Salem Vice Code doesn't have any standards for, for parks in the city, so we don't have like a minimum or maximum in the city's code. Just a couple other notes on that. We did ask through this outreach process about priorities for implementing this concept. And, you know, we really heard that the priorities for the community are, are this proposed skate park in the Hanson's to the bike park. And as we look to, to work on those facilities in the next, you know, the design development in the next few years, I don't believe we'll be adding parking with those improvements. So, so we're really looking later down in the future. And so with keeping that in mind, the, the parking lots might be developed with fewer than ninety-four stalls. Actually, we, we talked about this on page thirty-three of the Park Master Plan, that in later phases, we can evaluate kind of how mobile, personal mobility is operating and really take a step back and evaluate that ninety-four stall. So you could see that as a, a potential maximum, but could certainly be a, a situation where as time goes on, we're going to develop that parking lot with less because mobility options and the way we can commute have changed. And then I think I'll just conclude real quick by touching on the size of the dog park. And, and thank you, Counselor Hoy, for your, your, your feedback there. One, one thing that we can look at through the, the development of, of the, the dog park is to really see if we can utilize some, a space that's, that's just to the, to the east of where, where the dog park is proposed today between one of the existing baseball fields as a potential location for the small dog area. And by doing so, we can really make both the large dog and the small dog area a little bit larger to, to, to get at your, your, kind of your comment there that it's going to serve quite a big area. So, so we can certainly will look at that if, if we proceed with this concept.
Could you just describe a little bit the, the public involvement process that's gone into this? How, how long has this? How long has this been worked on? Did it go through the neighborhood groups as we're seeing it tonight? Did it go to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board? I kind of like to understand the processing of this as it arrives on our desk. And we look at possibly reprocessing it, right?
Yeah, our outreach for this project started approximately a year ago. Right when COVID hit, we threw out our public engagement plan because we knew that wasn't going to work. And we did our best with what we had. And so what we did is we developed what we referred to as virtual open houses. And these were micro websites that hosted information about the project and had tools in it for us to solicit feedback from community members. And then we just did our absolute best with outreach. At the onset of the project, we did a postcard mailing to the three-mile service area for Gear Park. And that's just an example. We did lots of other things just to get the word out there. And I think in totality, that we had three of these virtual open houses over the course of the past year. And I think that they were a positive tool because we got more people involved. Not everyone probably could access these virtual houses in the same way. But if you compare it to like in-person meetings, you know, we had an order of maybe 1,000 people participate in these events where at a meeting, we would not see that attendance. And then as we moved into the fall, we presented a preferred concept that responded to all the feedback we've received over the course of approximately nine months. And that was presented to the Salem Park and Recreation Advisory Board, and we received their unanimous endorsement. As Councilor Hoy alluded to, I have been working with NESA quite closely throughout the process. They have not provided written comments this evening, but I tell you, they have been involved.
Did you have any comments on this climate-related issue? I think Tom raised that is a concern broadly across the community, the impact of emissions. Did you get any testimony on that issue?
Yes, yes, we did receive comments throughout the process from individuals, you know, individuals who have provided you testimony this evening have definitely spoken to me several times, and we've had some frank discussions. There are some testimony this evening from individuals who I'm not familiar with the process, but certainly some have been involved for quite some time.
But this was considered by you and also by SPRAB as to how to deal with it, or whether it's a functional question or whatever. I don't know how you'd describe it.
Correct. The parking issue actually was the main topic for discussion at the SPRAB meeting where this was considered. And we did have the majority discussion about parking at that evening.
Okay. Council Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would just remind Mr. Romanek, and I don't know if this was specifically regarding the master plan process, but we did have a meeting in Gear Park with NESCA sometime during the pandemic. I don't remember when. It was sometime within the past year or so, and I think that was productive as well. And I'm not authorized to speak on behalf of NESCA by any means, but I can characterize the conversation that I was witness to last Tuesday, where they were very supportive. And I believe they had intended to write a letter of support, but apparently that didn't happen.
Thank you. Council Nordike?
Thank you. So I share concerns about 94 additional parking spots. I think that we have a number of parks in the city right now where that sort of parking, you know, parking to capacity is not necessarily what we want to pursue. And we've already adopted as a council aggressive greenhouse gas emission goals. And we have to be, we have to have that in mind when we make decisions like this and just consider the potential impact. So I would be interested in seeing an alternative to 94 additional parking spots. Maybe half of that amount might be more suitable. I'm not going to say I know the perfect number, but I can see the amount of concern over that, and I wanted to echo my concern. One of the public commenters said that they didn't see a, that no additional bicycle parking. And I wanted to confirm with city staff whether that was accurate based on the proposed master plan.
Thank you, counselor. That's a great question. So bike parking, to distinguish it from vehicle parking, is required by city code. And so our intention would be to provide the bicycle parking quantities required by code. So it would be probably several bike racks. And so we would consider that like with a bench or a picnic table as more of an amenity or a design detail. So it's certainly our intent to provide bicycle parking. It's just not discussed in the master plan.
Okay, got it. Yeah, it's a small detail that you don't see that listed. But, okay, but I can understand, given the amount of interest in having as many bike-friendly parks as possible, that even if it's not necessary to have it in the plan, seeing it in there would be palliative, I guess, for a number of the residents. Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you. Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you. So I wanted to start off by adding my voice to the dog park issue. I'll just say that and let it lie, but know that I also would love to advocate for some more dog parks out here in East Salem. And then my question that I have for you is, of course, centered around this parking issue. And I know that we, well, actually, I don't know. So you can tell me. We do a transportation plan as well. Is that correct?
As part of this project, there was no formal transportation study to derive those parking quantities, though.
Okay. So would we, or could we do that as far as, so here's my thing. You know, I look at, you know, this new road coming through. I see that there is public transportation, but the bus stop is all the way out on State Street. I don't know where the nearest one is going to be. I see that we have Park Avenue, which connects us to a lot of our neighborhoods who are going to be using this, but there's no sidewalks. There's so many different transportation, just completely wide array of issues. I would love to see, maybe even if we could put a pause on the park plan, which just let me say, the park plan is amazing, and I am so excited about this. But could we do that until we get a final study of how transportation is going to move around this new park, new feature in our communities? So that then, once that's completed, then we can take a look at the park plan again and say, does that parking make sense? Or can we adjust it and then proceed from there? Does that make sense?
Yes, I think I understand the point you're trying to make. And I think what I would say in response to that is, is once again, that the parking, any additional parking is not proposed for the next phase of park development. So it's not on the immediate horizon. So I do think it's reasonable that we could commit to studying the parking issue more. And of course, I do expect the world to be a little different in five to 10 years. And so maybe that answers your question.
Yeah. So if we vote tonight to approve this, then are we voting to approve 94 parking spots? Does that make sense?
So the master plan has a max, so it would be the maximum. It would be kind of thinking about this as a aspiration for the Gear Park. The maximum parking lot that you would be expected to see someday would be 94 units. But again, there is some language in the master plan, and we're committing to reviewing that number as time goes on because it's not going to be the immediate focus.
Okay. Yeah, because I have a lot of concerns about 94. You know, like Nordic was saying, you know, half would be a lot better. But know that for me. And then I also just had a quick question. How many parking spots are at the dog park at Minto Brown? Do you know? It's kind of, it's not really a parking lot, it's a gravel lot, but.
I do not know the parking quantities for Minto for that parking lot off the top of my head. I just want to add that if we do, if we don't provide enough parking at Gear Park and we put in these amenities, I think what we'll see potentially, and it was one of our major concerns, is that the neighborhood adjacent will be impacted because there will be overflow parking. You know, people will continue to come. And then so that's what we're really trying to be cautious about, this balance to get the number right. So, you know, I will admit, it's an art as much as it's a science.
Yeah, thanks for saying that. And I do recognize that as well. And I think what we're struggling with here as a council is this, you know, goal of 2050, right, being carbon neutral. And some of these bigger, you know, issues at hand, like climate change, and how are we going to change the way that our city functions, trying to get people to not rely on cars as much and try to build out the infrastructure for pedestrian and bike so that we can get to this future that we're all looking for. So know that we appreciate your work and we understand the pains of growing in this new direction. But it is, you know, on my mind, definitely top of mind is this, is this kind of greater end goal that we're all trying to get to. So thanks for answering my questions tonight.
Council Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we've had enough discussion that I want to make an amendment to the motion, and so we can discuss it. I move the staff recommendation without the additional parking provision and request staff to return to council with a more detailed analysis of the need for the parking space. So I move, in effect, I'm moving to approve the plan without the parking. But I would like to hear more from the staff about the need for parking.
Second.
Council Hoy? Wait, just a sec. Tom, do you want to comment on your?
Just not too much. I mean, I've already said this stuff, but it really relates to climate action. It relates to what things are going to be like. I'm also interested in, sure, we got the consultants, and the consultant says this is what we do, but the consultants know we have a climate action plan.
We don't have one yet.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're moving toward when we have a goal for greenhouse gas emissions.
Council Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on the conversation, I'm thinking that it would make more sense just to postpone any action on this master plan tonight, send it back to staff for some more work. They've heard some of our feedback, and let it come back forward again when they're ready to do so. I would, I don't think that there's any benefit to doing a partial now and a partial later. It just seems to me like, let's send it back to staff and reconsider it as a whole when it's ready.
I would not object to that, Mr. Mayor. If that's, I don't know if that's, that's pretty broad to say that's a friendly amendment, but it ought to be postponed for a continued discussion of the parking requirements.
Why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we vote on your amendment?
And then make another one.
And then let Hoy make his, if yours fails.
Well, Mr. Mayor, mine hasn't been seconded yet, so why don't just? Yeah, okay, Council Nordike seconded it.
Oh, did Nordike?
Yeah, so let's vote on that motion and then see where we go.
Okay. Rather than, we're going to pile up amendments here. I can hear. Council Lewis?
If I understand the process correctly, a lot of issues have been looked into regarding this park plan, including our move towards climate action. And we've heard from the park planner that there was engagement by people who were very concerned about the parking. As the process went on, there was compromise in my mind, and that compromise was 94. To have us now stalled because of a special interest group where four people from that group email us and to go against all of the public input and all of the work that the public has done, I think is a disgrace. I would vote for the plan, but I will not vote for the amendment.
Okay. The only, the only concern I have with both of the suggestions I'm hearing is, what I heard Rob saying was, this does not build 94 parking spaces. This just says a maximum goal, which is going to be reviewed during each phase of development, will give the council multiple chances to deal with this question as we move forward. None of these parking places are being built tomorrow, or this year, or next year. This is, this is just sets up a way for us to progress on what parking looks like. And this council will have a chance in future councils to assess that. They probably would anyway. They can build them whether they want to, or you put them in or not. But I, it just seems like if you, if you go down this path and even sending it back, I mean, this thing has been reviewed. They left an escape clause for the council to deal with this, particularly as we get better information on use of that park, on what the impact of the dog park is going to be, or dog parks, that, and the development that's actually going on generally in that area where we will have sidewalks on park, things like that going on. It just seems like we're trying to second guess a really pretty successful process we've used on other parks around the city. I'm going to vote no on this.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. I was prepared to be able to entertain Counselor Hoy's motion to postpone the whole thing. But listening to Counselor Lewis, I can see some benefits to approving what we've got now, except for the parking. And I would much rather see when you say, well, we can go to 94, and then they'll come back and tell us how many we're really going to. I'd much rather see we say zero, and then if they can justify more, let them come back later and say, yeah, we need this for this and that. And that fits right in with my suggestion or my recommendation or motion that the staff return to council with a more detailed analysis. So I am going to go vote for my amendment.
So what you'll do then, counselor, is your concept would be to leave this kind of blank spot on the master plan, which is for 94 parking spaces as you sort of work this out. Sounds kind of like what they're proposing.
What a horrible thought to have open space in a park.
I'm not sure it's open space.
Well, if it's not a parking lot, it's going to be open space.
Okay. Yo, I'm sorry, Virginia?
I think all three of us raised our hands at the same time, but thank you. Yeah, I think that, you know, Counsel Lewis, you're talking about kind of us responding maybe to just a few different people who had some particular ideas about this. And I would like to counter that a little bit with something that, you know, for me, the environment has always been top of mind. And trying to move, you know, what I said earlier about trying to move our society away from this idea where we rely on our cars so much has really been something that I hoped to do while I was on council. And, and, you know, it might seem kind of pointless to fight about 94 parking spots, but I think that it's beyond just 94 parking spots. It's the idea that we could maybe think differently when we go to build a park. So from the very beginning, from the very groundwork, we're saying, we'll set aside this area and leave it open for parking if we need it. But we're going to start small and build from there instead of, you know, even, you know, going to the middle ground like you were talking about. That's kind of how we've done it in the past. And I think what my goal is in this and voting for this is that we, as a city council, as a city, kind of start to change the way that we approach these things from the very beginning so that the environment and the impacts on the environment are top of mind and that all forms of transportation are given the same kind of investment, maybe, or priority. And I actually really reject the idea that I am rejecting this whole park plan and all of the city work that's been put into it. I think the staff that has worked on this have been amazing. I've participated in a lot of the outreach and been at the neighborhood meetings when they've come, and it's been a really great process. And especially to change in the middle of COVID and try to change all the ways that you reach out. And so I really commend the staff on their plans. I think it's a beautiful park, and I'm very, very excited for it. So, yeah, I just wanted to leave it. Yeah.
Hey, Council Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not entirely convinced that that maximum number is really called out in a formal way. My experience is that once you approve a master plan, then that's sort of staff's direction to make it happen, unless there's some sort of other intervention in the meantime. And I appreciate what Mr. Romanek had to say, that it's in a, it's in a further phase, and there would be certainly an opportunity. But I, I'm not convinced it's that formal. Also, I would like to say that I object to the characterization that a concern about parking is from four or five constituents or people. We have a stated council policy that we've all voted on that actually supports this issue about looking at the parking and taking a thoughtful look at it. And maybe 94 is the right number, but maybe it's not. I don't know what our consultant knew, and I don't know that they knew our values. I don't know that they knew that we have a stated, an adopted council policy. I don't know what they knew. I don't know what they based that on, or if it's just sort of general, you got these many things, you've got this stuff going on, you need this many spaces. And so it's a little bit concerning that we have an ordinance regarding bike parking, but not, not car parking. And maybe we need to consider that to give staff more guidance, because they're doing the best they can based on the rules at hand and based on the input they've gotten. And, you know, they're delivering a product that they think fits all that. And now we're giving them a little bit different feedback. I am still not convinced that doing a half-baked part of a plan is the right way to go. to go. And I will not be voting for that amendment. I will be voting to postpone the whole thing, send it back, give us a full, a complete package.
Thank you. That was really helpful, Counsel Hoi. Who'd I see? Copcho? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking at this from a planning commissioner and one of the members of the Climate Task Force perspective, you know, I can't help but think that if, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to build and plan and design our city for people, not for cars. That, that, that goes for parks, that goes for everything else. And so if, if we're not willing to cut back on parking spaces to get to the goals that the council has already adopted, which is these parking, it's a small step. If we're not willing to be able to do that, then how are we going to tackle big, long-term systemic changes that are going to be necessary to actually hit those targets down the road? And I think that's something really important to think about. And as I hear Counselor Stapleton talk about the, the lack of complete sidewalks in the neighborhood, are we then building a park that requires people own a car to be able to get to it? Because, you know, as someone who, not that long ago, I didn't have a car and I wanted to go to parks and I would ride my bike to them. And I, I can tell you that the bike network over there, along with incomplete sidewalks, doesn't make for like a happy trip to try to get there if you don't have, have a car. So I think trying to require folks to have a car just to go to a park is, is a little bit miss, miss, missing the mark.
All right, Counsel Lewis.
Yeah, I just want to make sure my comments were understood correctly. I don't believe I said that only four people care about climate action. I believe what I said and what I meant, and I'll try and be as clear as I can, is that after this process where everybody was involved, including the climate, climate action advocates and the advisory boards, who I believe do know that we are working on a climate action plan. After the process, after all that involvement, only four people emailed us at the last minute telling us, don't do it. Everybody recognizes the importance of climate action. I'm talking about the four people that contacted us after this process was over.
Okay, are we ready to vote on, we're on, we're voting on Counsel Anderson's amendment, which would be to remove the 94 or whatever number, the number. Yes, Counsel Phillips.
Yeah, just so that when we go to vote, it's quicker. I know I'm pro dog park, but I've learned that if I want more dog parks that people can't get there, like with the mass transit that we currently have, so that that kind of makes us have parking. So I have to say, I don't feel like I have enough knowledge to make it like a great decision tonight. And I've really been moved by what City Council President Chris Hoy just said. So I guess if I agree with Counsel President Hoy, does that mean I vote no on this amendment? Even though I think that, you know, climate change is real, we all have to, you know, do everything possible to decrease our carbon footprint.
Yeah.
Is that how I?
I think that's right. That's how I'm going to vote so I can vote for Hoy's motion. I don't want to, I don't want to solve it tonight. I'd like to see it solved over a different time period and get a better understanding of what's going on here. I, I was really moved by his discussion of there is no maximum number in the plan. And I, I feel like there's, there's just enough uncertainty that it, it's worth having another look and another round on this thing. That's how, that's how I understood this. Hoy, do you want to explain your?
I think you basically summarized it. I, I just am not convinced that the, the 94 is, is, is going to be reviewed or necessarily reviewable in the future. I understand that it's a multi-phase process and that's in a future phase, but there's nothing, once a plan is in place, unless council realizes, oh, hey, there's 94 spaces that we don't, we may not actually need, let's reconsider that. It's already in a, in a plan that's going forward. And so in my mind, that, you know, we should, we should either call out that language in more detail and more, more definitively, or we should change it or, you know, something other than just have this sort of, what's, I think is a little bit of a bad concept in there. Plus, the other thing we can do if we delay it is we can probably formalize the larger dog park. That's my goal. That's my goal as well.
Okay. Very good. All right. Is there anyone else? I just want to make sure I'm not missing anybody. Okay. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Counsel Leung is absent. Counsel Gonzalez?
No.
Counsel Hoi?
No.
Counsel Nordike?
Aye.
Counsel Lewis?
No.
Counsel Stapleton?
Aye.
Counsel Anderson?
Aye.
Counsel Phillips?
No.
Mayor Bennett?
No.
Okay, motion fails. Counsel Hoi, do I call, I think I'll call on you next, like you resolve this thing right now.
I don't know if I should restate it or if you're asking for a restatement or an ex?
I'd like you to make a motion, I think, and just to, yeah.
I move, thank you. I move the gear park master plan be returned to staff or further work based on the direction heard tonight and return to, to council at a future date.
Second. Second by Phillips. Any discussion? Okay. The recorder, please call the roll.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Yes, aye.
Counsel Hoi?
Aye.
Counsel Nordike?
No to 94 parking spots, yes to the motion.
All right. Counsel Lewis?
Aye.
Counsel Stapleton?
Aye.
Counsel Anderson?
Aye.
Counsel Phillips?
Aye.
Counsel Leung is absent and Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, we'll move forward to 3.3E. Counsel Hoi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move city council authorize the city manager to execute the attached real estate agreement with United Way of the Middle Line and Valley Incorporated for the sale of surplus city real property identified as tax lot 072 W19AC 01701 4396 4408 4432 4446 and 4480 Market Street Northeast.
Second.
That's a second, a third, a fourth, a fifth.
That was a lot. Sounds like let's vote and get, get going here.
Well, I think that's a really wise idea. However, I do want to stop for a moment and pause and just, I think Cliff Dameron is available to perhaps post the map so everybody's really clear on the parcels we're talking about. I see Mr. Nielsen still here. And I just wanted to highlight, I did a little bit of this earlier. This has been the result of, I don't know, 18, 19, 20 months of work and meeting with the good folks at United Way and our staff and the neighborhood associations. And I think that, you know, this is going to add to our, what I call our growing inventory on our continuum of options in addressing homelessness and in preventing homelessness. And we're talking about houses here. We're not talking about shelters. We're not talking about camping. We're talking about tiny homes and they're beautiful tiny homes. I looked at these when I toured them. I thought about my dad who would, who would have loved to live in one of these houses where he's still with us. They are going to be wonderful additions to our community, to this neighborhood, to my neighborhood, which is where I live. And I am so happy to be supporting the great work at United Way. And I hope that this serves as a model for future developments as we see small parcels or even large parcels of property available, whether it's publicly owned or privately owned, or maybe the county might own it, or the state might own it. These types of programs can be amazing. This one is going to target seniors, but they don't know how to do that. But this one's a great model and I'm so happy and so pleased to be bringing this motion tonight. I'm not sure if we lost the mayor, but I'll go ahead and assume we did. Counsel Lewis.
Yeah, I, I hope this is correct. I have a little difficulty with the term tiny, but I, I would think this would qualify for middle housing. And that seems to be the definition that we're going to as, as a society. You know, you have sheltering and then you have middle housing, you have regular housing. And I think it, it, it's the appetite a little bit better than just to call it tiny housing.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I know the map is up. So this is Market Street, just above the top of that map. You can't quite see it. That's the parking lot for Swigel Elementary to give you some indication. Market Street used to go straight through there above those, on that area that's parking lot now. And it was redirected to a directly attached with Swigel Road sometime, some years ago. So just to give you an orientation. And those lots currently just sit vacant. Their, the city staff has to mow them all the time and that sort of thing. And they're really not serving a productive purpose at this moment. And this is going to give them the opportunity to be much more productive. Are there any other questions or comments?
I have a quick question.
Yes, Counsel Stapleton.
How many, and this is probably in the information report, I'm just not remembering. How many people are going to benefit from this?
Well, Mr. Nielsen spoke, he answered my question during comments regarding that and I didn't write it down. Maybe he's, I see that he's still with us, so maybe he would talk about, speak to that one more time if he could, if that's, if that's possible.
So, so I wasn't real specific and let me explain the reason for, for the lack of specificity. So under current regulations, that lot number three, we would be able to do seven units. 400 square feet unit, you figure that's probably two people, maybe one person. And that, you know, that's kind of a rule of thumb. The, the My Salem project that Eunice Kim is working on, she has identified cottage clusters up to 12 units on more than 7,000 square feet. So, so that would produce, you know, there's some flexibility potentially. So the, the answer I gave earlier was we're, we're looking at probably 40 or 50 units over all of these lots. And, you know, if you, if you split the difference and you say one and a half people, you know, that would give you, you know, 60 to 75 people.
Perfect. Thank you. And I apologize to my council members that I must have been distracted when that was asked earlier. So I apologize and thank you, Brent, for giving me the information now.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. Are there other questions or comments? And thank you, Mr. Dameron, for staying to this late part of the agenda when you would really hope that it would remain on the consent agenda. I appreciate you being here this late. I think you can go ahead and share the screen now. And I see that, oh, there's Counsel Nordike.
Hi, thank you. So I remember, you know, one of the first things that I did was I sat down with Rhonda Bruloff and her team and with Counselor Hoi early on in being a city counselor at their headquarters off of Bliler Ave. And hearing them talk about their vision for this project, it's one thing to talk about it, you know, in person and do the back of the napkin kind of calculations. Then it's another step to actually tour one of the prototypes and really visualize people being in the space. But it's another thing altogether to come here and to finally be in a position to vote on it. So I really appreciate all the staff and everything that, that all of us have done to help really push for this to happen. When the first time I posted about United Way's interest in providing tiny homes for low-income seniors, I dropped a donate button because I do that sometimes for the community partners I work with. And they immediately got like a $500 anonymous donation. Huge outpouring of support on social media. So you said a lot.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Can somebody mute the mayor's screen so we can hear Counselor Nordike, please? He stepped away. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Nordike.
Don't worry. It's, it's Zoom. It happens. It totally happens. But anyway, I mean, I think what a lot of folks don't realize is that there are so many folks who are this close to being homeless and that includes a lot of low-income seniors. When we saw Meals on Wheels is another great example of this, when they caught wind of the pandemic and the number of food box requests just shot through the roof. So I'm really just shocked at how much of a need there really is. That was one of the first shocks to the system that I had as a new counselor. But the reason I'm saying this is that, you know, as someone who listens a lot to the community, there is an outpouring of support for the concept of tiny homes for the low-income seniors and folks just like them. So I really am hopeful that we can see that happen, not just in Salem, but really surrounding this area. Because we have a lot of bedroom communities just outside of Salem that would benefit from these sorts of programs. So I'm thrilled that we can do this thing today and do our part today. And by the way, there are a lot of folks living in the parks who would qualify for this kind of housing. I've met them. Everyone thinks the people in the parks must be in their twenties and drug-addled criminals. That's not true. And in fact, there are a number of seniors who have been pulled out of the parks already and have had their lives saved because of the COVID motel program that Arch has put on. There are still people out there who meet that criteria. So kudos to United Way for being such an innovator and such a partner. Thank you, Brent, my fellow Rotarian. You do have standing work. You do us all proud. But anyway, so happy to look forward to voting for this tonight and for future opportunities along the way.
All right, thank you, Mr. Copcho.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be real fast. Only to say that I think everybody's done a phenomenal job on this. And part of being a guest counselor, it's, it's great to be a guest. I get to participate in these fun four-hour meetings that you have. But, but I don't, I don't get to vote on anything. And this is something that I really wish I could vote on because I think it's such a unique opportunity for, for everybody involved. And I'm really thankful to be part of a community that's able to pull this together.
Yeah, this, it is great. It's a, it's a project that's been years in the making from this, from the street realignment to having this surplus property, making it available, the tiny houses, the, the whole thing has been just a really good progress. It's taken a number of years to get here, but it's great to get here. Okay, you want to vote? Anyone want to not vote? Okay, if the recorder please call the roll.
Counsel Hoi?
Aye.
Counsel Nordike?
Aye.
Counsel Lewis?
Aye.
Counsel Stapleton?
Aye.
Counsel Anderson?
Aye.
Counsel Phillips?
Aye.
Counsel Leung is absent. Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay, motion passes. Counsel Anderson, 3.3F.
Thank you. I move a staff recommendation to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with the city employee-owned business.
Second.
Second by Hoi.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be very brief on this if I can be brief. I pulled this just so we could let the public know that this is something that is allowed and proper under the procedures of the city council, that this was a bid that was for the services that was made in accordance with all city and state laws and that under certain requirements, we have to, we, we need to accept, we should accept in the public interest, the lowest bid that can do the job. And that's what happened here. So I think that we should allow this contract.
Any discussion? Okay, would the recorder please call the roll?
Counsel Nordike?
Aye.
Counsel Lewis?
Aye.
Counsel Stapleton?
Aye.
Counsel Anderson?
Aye.
Counsel Phillips?
Aye.
Counsel Leung is absent. Counsel Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counsel Hoi?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. 3.3G, Counsel Hoi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move city council approve the attached sidewalk cafe slash on-street platform program.
Second.
Second by Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this item not because I'm concerned about it. I, exactly the opposite. I'm very, very supportive of it. I felt like it needed some more attention. However, I think more people need to be aware of this. I had some questions about some of the details and through a conversation with Ms. Rutherford yesterday, was able to get those questions answered. And I just, in, in talking with her, it seemed like a good idea to, to pull it and have a conversation, albeit very brief, because it is 9:15. But I think it's good to get that, some comments and questions out there. One of the things that I learned yesterday was that we currently, excuse me, we currently have one platform dining facility that would meet the new requirements. So what that would mean, if I got this right, and I'm hoping Ms. Rutherford will correct me if I'm wrong, will have one that meets the, the new requirements. So all of the others will stay in, are eligible to stay in place through September, but after September, they would have to be will stay in, are eligible to stay in place through September, but after September, they would have to be modified, possibly removed and reconstructed, something like that. So we're status quo, even if we all vote yes for this tonight, we're status quo until September. And then the new rules would kick in. And I'm hoping that Ms. Rutherford can correct me and also maybe just discuss briefly the situation with the part, impact on parking and parking fees that we talked about yesterday.
Sure. Um, so big picture, we started a year ago at Council Direction with expanded outdoor dining um into the streets with some street closures and then expansion into parking spaces. So it has been very successful. The restaurants, a number of them have asked uh for this to be a, a more permanent situation and to be able to have platforms. Platforms are a little bit tricky in it, in our community because the right-of-way, the parking spaces are under the jurisdiction of Public Works. They don't do structural stuff. Structural is building and safety. But they don't have jurisdiction over the right-of-way. So it's been a challenge for the businesses who want platforms to navigate this. So we decided to chart out a program internally. We contracted with an architect to put together some design guidelines and a process. And that's what we're bringing forward for approval now is to be able to respond to all of the businesses that are interested in continuing to have outdoor dining in parking spaces, but without the big orange barricades. And with something that's going to be um more permanent, that provides a little bit more usable space because you don't have the barricades, that will be more attractive in our downtown and to meet a lot of different needs. So uh, so we put together these, the design guidelines as well as a program that's been vetted by various city departments. We're going to, to migrate to this new program over the next few months. This will allow those that are currently using tents um in parking spaces downtown to continue that for a few more months as we move out of, out of um the greatest COVID risks. And then at the end of September, um move from the, what we've been doing through this cafe dining permit to a revocable license for an ongoing use of parking spaces. So once we move this direction and, and businesses can certainly start this at any time once this is approved. And we'll have sort of um a, a mishmash of both throughout the summer and then shutting down the tents uh the end of September. Uh, outdoor dining on the sidewalks will continue as it is. So you, the, any of the businesses that have the cafe permit can continue to have seating on the sidewalks. So we're also contemplating a fee for this program, not for the first year, but starting um this time, you know, so in July in one year. So we will be coming back to council for approval of the fee. Right now, um we are thinking that that fee will be equivalent to what we have been historically charging contractors or other businesses to take a parking space offline. And that is about $150 a month per space uh right now. Um, we may, based on feedback and further consideration, modify that. But that's what we're thinking right now would be the, the situation starting in one year. So that gives businesses a little bit more time, uh again, to kind of come out of the worst impacts of COVID.
So Ms. Rutherford, uh if folks want to see this in action, it's down at Kitchen on Court. Is that the one that is?
Yeah, now the platform that is in front of Kitchen on Court was not built um using our design guidelines because they, they navigated a process uh and wanted to get it up and running before this was adopted. There may be a few mild tweaks that they have to make to their platform in order to do away with the barricades and some things that they've still have in place right now. But um, but generally, you know, that's, that's what we're going to be looking at is something along those lines.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions? Anything, Counsel, Counsel Stapleton?
Thank you so much. Um, I am really excited about this. And I was actually down at, at the kitchen uh the other day with Counsel Hoy. And I'm seeing it, it looks really great, you know, and I think um that having something consistent across the city uh will give it much more um oh, what's the word I'm looking for? Just kind of a more homogeneous, is, is that the word I'm looking for? Just everything is kind of um
Nice and neat.
Yes, nice and neat. And also that, that cars know, you know, uh can they, they can see the same thing over and over again and know what that is and, and um how to function around that. Um, my question is that those platforms look a little spendy to put in. And, and having uh businesses come out of COVID, especially restaurants, cafes and the like, are they going to have the capital to, to build something like that? And if not, could we use urban renewal funds for something like that? Or maybe there's some other COVID relief um funds that are available to either make loans or low interest loans or something like that? I mean, has that been talked about at all?
We have been looking into that. Um, you know, urban renewal dollars have to be spent on bricks and mortar and would have to come with a time commitment for maintaining it um so that it's a capital expenditure. Now, you know, based on the price of some of these, yes, they are spendy. You know, I think that some of these could be, you know, well over 20, $30,000, depending on how stout you make it. So at that level, um and that type of investment, um you know, that may meet the test for urban renewal. And we would be open to establishing a grant program um where there would be a match. So that the, the restaurant would have investment and then we would provide a match component. Um, we don't have that designed and ready to come forward to council right now. Uh, we were in a big rush to get this program adopted because so many restaurants have, have been contacting us regularly, wanting to know when, you know, we'll be bringing it forward. So we told them we would do our best to get it approved before June. Um, and then we could follow up with an urban renewal program.
All right, thank you. And I, I think this will go a long way to revitalizing that downtown. And, and I also just want to kind of put out there, um I know there's probably restaurants across the city who are wanting to partake in this. And, and I, I want people to know that I'm open to hearing from you and hearing what you're looking for. And I think staff is as well. So please make your voice heard so that we can, we can know what you're looking at.
Thank you. Okay, yes, Mr. Copcho.
All right, sorry, not sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I want to take the opportunity because I took uh time last week to walk downtown and talk to all of the business owners who have uh operations currently set up. And this goes with the whole notion of uh that, that I mentioned before. You know, we're trying to plan and design our city for people, not cars. Uh, and building platforms for people to sit and eat and, and uh converse and, and have a good meal is exactly that. And, and where cars used to park, right? And all of the business owners that I talked to, uh including uh Mr. Vu there at uh Kitchen, talked about how supportive they are of the idea. We've heard overwhelming support. And I'm glad that Counselor Stapleton just mentioned um what she did because two of the business owners I talked to said, you know, a lot of the um restaurants that are better off are going to have theirs faster or better, or you know, it's going to be nicer. And some of us aren't going to be able to do that. And so it might be a little rimshot or, you know, it might look a little patchwork and some might not be as nice. And we, we don't want that to happen necessarily. And so I think uh it would be great to see progress made in making some grants uh funding available for restaurants to be able to partake in this uh unique opportunity. And as well as getting this guidance out fast so I can appreciate the balance. Because the other thing that I heard from business owners was summer's coming. It's basically already here. If we don't have guidance to start ramping up now, we're not going to be able to do what we need to do to be able to, to succeed and try to recover as we come out of the, the COVID era restaurant um uh era. So you know, the, the last thing I'll mention is I um, I recently sold something on Craigslist that's neither here nor there. But the folks that came to get it uh came from Corvallis and they'd never been to Salem, which I thought was bizarre. But they uh saw all the folks out at these uh sidewalk cafes. And they said, wow, I didn't realize how vibrant and lively downtown Salem was. And they wouldn't have noticed that had not we had this program. So I think it's a testament to the success of the program and uh I look forward to, to council continuing.
Great, thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, this is Jose. Just wanted to have to recuse myself because our bus, our family business could benefit from this program, so.
Okay, great, thank you. I hope it does. Okay, if the recorder could please call the roll.
Counselor Lewis.
Oh, it's the uh, it, as the representative of Ward Eight, I mentioned earlier, I hardly ever get to go first. To go first twice in one meeting is unprecedented.
I know this would be
Enthusiastically vote aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leung is absent. Counselor Gonzalez just abstained. Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordic.
Fantastic idea, aye.
And Mayor Bennett.
Aye, okay, motion passes. Very good. So we will move on to information reports. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a series of comments on three different reports on counsel, that I'm going to make on Counselor Leung's behalf. She asked me uh to share her thoughts with all of you and with staff on a few of the reports. I'll start with number six B. And she says that um my concern is this is in my ward and affects people in my area. As more homes are being built, I would hope the price range is fair and reasonable and start at rates a working family could afford and not inflated to high prices that families who want to own their first home cannot afford. Contrary to the sta, what the staff report, there, contrary to the staff report, there are concerns about traffic and what the impacts mean to the residents who live on or near Battle Creek. Costco is already coming and the addition of these homes in this area will increase traffic to those who live in the area and those who use the street to get to their destinations into and out of Salem. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go on for six C, if I, if I may.
Yeah.
Item six C, again on Counselor Leung's behalf. Uh, this is an exciting development and considering the impact COVID-19 has had on outreach to youth, the addition of a point five O FTE is one way to think creatively on how to engage with our youth. I fully support this. And then six D, also on Counselor Leung's behalf. Development in areas equals more traffic and impact on local community members. Mildred Lane has, has seen an increase in the number of traffic, in number of traffic and speed. Over the past four plus years, the city has put up speed tracking machines which worked on occasion. Equipment is old and doesn't track all speeds at times. This is listed as not a major arterial area. However, more homes are being built and as such, more traffic. I would like to ensure safety precautions are in place to protect residents and wildlife alike that are in the area and risk injury and death from speeding drivers. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hoy. Counselor Stapleton?
Yeah, I just also wanted to talk about item uh six C. This was a really a fantastic report. I was so glad that we uh, and that I asked for it and that we got this. I will not lie. I started crying when I was reading this. It was so inspirational and moving. And um I really, I would just like to know uh what it's going to take uh to get this to the next level. So um I guess uh city manager, what, what do you need from us in order to, to move on this?
Uh, five votes. There are two opportunities, more, more, uh, I think specifically to your question, Counselor. You will be considering uh the budget on, on your next meeting and it is your budget. Uh, the budget committee made a recommendation. You can change that recommendation. So that is an opportunity to add uh whatever portion of, of this uh information report you would like. I think the second opportunity would be as you consider, as council considers expenditures, programs, initiatives, projects uh from the uh American Rescue Plan Act, uh the ARPA funds would be, would be the other, would be the other funding source.
Great, thank you for your guidance.
Okay, would these be eligible for that $418,000 of unallocated CBDG and that kind of stuff? Is that part of that program?
I, I asked that question, Mayor, and I think I'll let uh Kristen or Norm Wright uh answer that.
Kristen?
Or we can get, or we can get back to you if, if Chris.
Yeah, either way, I just think I, it'd be interesting to see if, if there are other buckets that uh Counselor Stapleton can go.
I, likely not uh eligible. But we can go back and double check that, but I'd say likely not.
I think it'd be helpful to know and, and, and definitely know that ARP is available before we go into the general fund or, you know, hopefully by next week, we'll know where the money could come from for her proposal.
And Mayor, if I may, I'd like to also add that uh part of this direction from this recommendation is that we also seek out other ways in which we can expand the program with other funding opportunities outside of even CBDG so that we could maintain some other avenues there as well that will hopefully help spread out these dollars in better places. Thanks.
Okay, well, I, I think, if I understood Counselor Stapleton, she'd like to kind of know where we're headed by next, by the time we do the budget, so she doesn't miss her opportunities. So I, I hope you'll contact her and at least let her know where she can go to get the, the funding that she'd like to at least propose to council. Okay. Very good. Let's, if no one, anything else on information reports? Okay, we'll go then to second readings.
Ordinance Bill number 421, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at 2527 and 2547 Robbins Lane Southeast, annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District and Turner Fire Protection District. Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leung is absent. Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordic.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye, okay.
The next one is Ordinance Bill number 521, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at 3880 Croissant Creek Road South and city-owned lands annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leung is absent. Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordic.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Well, that completes our agenda, unless anyone's got anything. Okay, then we are adjourned. And don't forget Great Pride Month, huh?
Never, never, never forget.